I'd like to know if I can have a roll call.
John Hutzco.
Chris Smith.
Michael O'Brien.
Laurie Jean.
John Cutler.
Bob Wilbarg.
Great, if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, February 19th and March 5th, and we have two sets of minutes for approval. I did not get a chance to get through the December 18th ones, but let's see, November 20th. I don't have the attendance for the November 20th, so shall we all hold these over to our next meeting? Okay, that's fine, we'll hold them over. So the first item on our agenda tonight is an extension of final approval for the Deconic Mobile Home Park site plan on Hosner Mountain Road.
Good evening. Yeah, we're just still working with the Health Department. We did get a letter late November, which I submitted to the board. Unfortunately, with my workload, I haven't been able to address it completely at this point, but we will be doing so shortly.
Okay. Any significant changes to the plan that you're expecting, or is it?
Not at this point, but the last submission, as I mentioned, to the board, we had to redesign the entire inside of the building due to a new reviewer within the Health Department. So that really delayed us.
But no changes to the outside, no need to go back to the ARB or anything like that?
No.
We initially granted this. We've done three extensions so far. This will be our fourth.
I'm hoping we're at the end of the road at this point.
Okay. What are you asking for at this point?
And I know I'm gonna, just to get through this process, I'm gonna need the 90 days for sure.
Okay. I'd like that you came back and gave us kind of an update halfway through.
Okay.
I don't know what the sense of the board is, but maybe if you did six months, but ask me to come back in 90 days and just let us know where you are, if you're still on track.
Right, that'd be great.
I agree.
This has been a long time.
And also, but this is a tough time if you're at least done, so.
So do I have a motion for a six-month extension and then just provide us a 90-day update?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for a Bonanno three-lot subdivision on Mountaintop Road.
I wish to reopen the public hearing.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I understand we're having some AV problems, so do you have a map we can put up for the public?
No, I didn't bring a map. Um, I don't know if there's any, I don't know if there's anybody here to see it. I do have, I do have it on my stick.
Okay, yeah, unfortunately, our laptop's not working tonight. Pam, do we have our larger map from our file? Bear with us a moment, I want to make sure we put it up on the board. And folks, I guess I should have mentioned at the top of the meeting while we're getting the map up here, if anyone is here for the Hilltop Manor DEIS discussion, just to let you know, the applicant asked to be taken off our discussion list at the end of the meeting tonight. So we will have that back on a future meeting, but we won't be discussing item number six on our agenda, Hilltop Manor, because the applicant asked us to remove it from the meeting for this time. Has some additional information they want to provide before the meeting begins. If you want to just give us a quick recap of what you have again, since we're not able to put it up on the board, and then just let us know where you stand. I know we had a couple outstanding items.
The project proposal is a three-lot subdivision. The three lots are on Mountaintop Road. The parcel is on Mountaintop and historical Mount Road. It's 13-plus acres. There's about two and a half acres of wetlands on site. I've met with the, I've met with the DEP on site, and we've gone over the wetlands on site. There's a, there's a current stormwater pollution prevention plan that's, that has, that has a few comments that need to be addressed, but the comments that need to be addressed, it also needs to be reviewed by the DEP, which can't be done until I get a negative deck on the, on the project. The outstanding, the outstanding item currently is a letter from the DEC stating that the Indiana Bat will have no effect on the project, because we do have a hit for the Indiana Bat. However, we are at somewhere around 1,100 feet in elevation in the Indiana Bat, according to the, according to the New York State Fish and Wildlife, do not roost at, are not known to roost over 900 feet.
Okay, and the entire property is up above that elevation?
Yes. The lowest, the lowest point on the property is...
Okay.
So it's substantially higher than the, than the 900 feet. I was hoping tonight to be able to move on, move on and close the public hearing, and without having the DEC letter and just attach, after the last meeting, I was, I did have a few comments from the DEP on the EAF. I've updated the EAF, however, I haven't dropped it off because I'm waiting for the, the DEC letter to add to it. I could drop it off tomorrow with the, with the, with the Indiana Bat guidelines stating, from the Fish and Wildlife Service, saying that, that it, that they're not known to roost at elevations over 900 feet. I mean, if the DEC says something different, it is just notes, I believe, that add on the map and limit the, the time that I can, the trees can be harvested.
Okay. Michelle, I know we had tried to reach out to the DEC, no luck on getting a letter yet.
We haven't gotten a letter, but I did get a verbal confirmation that, yes, in fact, they, you know, consider anything above 900 feet not viable habitat, but I haven't received anything in writing.
Okay. And with regard to the swift items, I guess, Joe, is there anything that we should have in hand now prior to taking any action as far as closing the public hearing and that sort of thing?
Well, Steve and I had discussed some of our comments, and for a while, it seemed like he maybe had to at least show the DEP the concept and get their buy-in on it, but now they're sort, they're telling him he's gotta get his neck deck first, which I think is something they're, they do typically.
Okay.
I mean, we had, we had a couple of comments, none of them are really major. I guess the one about the sizing and the practices and some of the pre-treatment things, I think they could all be worked out. He's got enough land to work in some additional things if he has to, you know, increase the size or, or, you know, add another item.
But no significant change to the plan that you're anticipating with regard to those changes, just minor?
Correct, yeah.
And Brendan, how about traffic, anything with regard to site disenses? Are you all set and called?
Before we invite public comment, are there any questions or comments from board members?
Anything else? Michelle from AKRF or anything else? Okay. Do we have anyone from the public here to speak for or against the adjourned public, sorry, the Bonanno three-lot subdivision on Mountaintop Road? Okay, with that being said, the, the risk you take if we close the public hearing and then something comes up with the DEC letter or something like that, and you have to make a significant revision of the plan, is we may have to put you back in public hearing.
Okay.
Which would be re-noticing and all of that to the neighbors, but if, if you're confident and that's something you're comfortable doing, I'm comfortable that there's no significant...
As long as the applicant's willing to wait the 62-day time period within which for this board to make its decision until the DEP letter comes in.
Yes.
When we last saw you, you were still doing percolation tests. How did those all come out?
Without having the DEP submitting a complete application to the, to the DEP, and actually the snow cover on the ground, I was trying to do everything with one day of a, of a machine being on site, and without having, without, without being able to do, have the DEP witness it, and with, with having the snow on the ground, the Health Department wouldn't come and witness it either. So I, I'm, I've held off on that. I do have, I talked to Joe today. I have, I have some preliminary stuff that was done in, by Mr. Barger in, in 1991, when this was, this application, I believe, was in front of the board then as well. And I've doctored, I have a map that's stamped and sealed from, that was, was septic design. It has test hole location and percolation test locations throughout the site. It was actually a six-lot subdivision at the time. And they showed percolations in the range of anywhere from 10, 10 to 25 minutes, and there was a few, there was a few test holes that indicated water at about three and a half feet, but most of them were, most of them, no water were encountered, encountered on them, so I'm pretty confident that, that our, that our percolation tests will go well.
So again, understanding that if, if one of the letters comes in and has requirements for it that need to significantly change the plan, you may come back into public hearing. And then also to Tom's point, you understand if it takes more than 62 days, you're waiving that timeframe as far as a decision.
Yes.
Okay. Then if the, if the board wants to offer a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And what we'll do is, once your letters come in, we would schedule it for, schedule you for decision after we've had a chance to review the letters and whatever adjustments you need to make to the plan at that point.
Should I, should I hold off on rescinding the EAF until I have the letter from the DEC, or?
I would think so. I mean, why would, you'd just have to revise it again, I would think.
I, I think it would just be, well, okay, okay. I think it would just be adding a letter, but I'll, I'll hold on to it until, until I get that letter.
If you prefer to submit it and just have a blank page or something for the letter, and we'll add it in once you receive it, I'm fine with that too, whatever's...
Okay.
Whatever works.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda are, is the public hearing and a declaration of lead agency for John Jay Gas Station. So before we open the public hearing, Pam, we have all of the documentation we need and have no adverse comments from any of the involved agencies as far as lead agency. So do I have a motion to declare lead agency for John Jay Gas Station?
So moved.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then do I have a motion to open the public hearing for the John Jay Gas Station?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then Mike, I know this is the first time we're going through this one, so, and I, I'm sorry, we don't have our AV stuff working, but you can just turn the board a little bit so that the public can see. You're gonna have to turn it a lot, but just, just so that it's facing perfect. Thank you.
I guess what I'll start with, let me do a brief overrun for the, for the members of the public who are here, and then we'll get into some of the issues and so forth that we've dealt with during the course of the application. My name is Mike Gillespie, and with us tonight here is Brian Cottrell, who's been helping with preparing the plans. Those of you who are not familiar with the location, we are actually at the northeast location of Route 52 and Lake Drive, just to the west of Archway Plaza. If you see the sign, the print here on the right, you'll notice Archway on the right, and then Lake Drive with 52 in the front. This is a .63 acre parcel, and most of you know it as basically the abandoned car wash spot, okay? What the proposal entails is basically a removal of all existing structures on the site. And with that, the installation of a brand-new canopy in the front and a, just about a little over 3,000 square foot building in the rear, okay? And with that is certainly gasoline is gonna be served, and then it's gonna be a convenient mark. And we're also proposing as part of this, a drive-through, okay, with coffee being served. Now, what you see in front of you tonight, you can tell by the length of the area here, these are the structural locations, and then obviously we have the trapped circulation and parking areas on the perimeter, but this plan actually represents a number of meetings associated with going back and forth to this board, okay, trying to determine what the best layout of the lot is. There's no surprise, there's no surprise that this is a, a tight lot and a tight location. But all things considered, based upon, again, collaboration with this board, felt that this best represents the applicant's intent, as well as meets, hopefully, most of the needs of the town, as well as the board. You'll notice too, that there's some work that's been going on at the site. Recently, under certain DEC mandate, there was a requirement to have the existing tanks removed. That exists out there today. It's, there's some protective fencing around that whole front, but that is, is, is proceeding, okay? So what, what we're, a couple of things that we spoke about at the last meeting, okay? Number one, let's talk about cross-accesses. One of the things that were...
So Mike, if I can just have you flip to the proposed plan, so that we can...
This is actually the proposed one.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, okay. Do you have the one that's the drawing that shows the drive-through and everything? I'm sorry, I can't see it. It's in front of me.
It's on there.
Thank you.
Do we have a regular set up?
Got it, okay. It's hard to tell the difference between the grass and the pavement somewhere else than, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have like a white background drawing that they...
Okay, we don't have a full-size one, but just have a color one.
All right.
Yeah, we can throw that up there, because I'm sure we can put up the one we had submitted.
Sorry, I'm, go ahead.
Traffic circulation, access, so forth, there's always been an issue on this, on this project. And as part of this too, there was some thought to try and enhance maybe some of the traffic circulation.
Did you want?
On the board.
Put it up on the board. On the, on the Archway Plaza. The applicant, the owner approached the owner of Archway, and unfortunately, which was really reflected on the latest submitted that we had made, unfortunately, we were not able to secure an okay to allow that to happen, allow that to happen. Now, I think, on, on our end, there's certainly still a willingness to be able to incorporate something if it should happen in the future, to allow for the interconnection of these sites. And when I say the interconnection, really, the discussion was along the rear portion of the site back in the year. We have the ability to move a tractor-trailer to the site. We provided some diagram and layout. In fact, with the town consultant, traffic engineer, it's shown that that's achievable. And we talked about it the last time, related to the loading and unloading area. We have a dual area on the right-hand side of this building, one for the drive-through, and we have an emergency lane. And what we had discussed at the last meeting was to be able to use that emergency lane during those temporary periods for the purposes of loading and unloading. So that is the intent and the plan, and I think we, you know, again, there was some due diligence related to trying to obtain that, and unfortunately, we just didn't, didn't come up with it.
Is, you know, I remember, I think the board all felt that that would enhance both sites, and so it's really a shame. I mean, is there anything that we as a board could do to reach out to Archway Plaza and make that suggestion? Because, I mean, every single car that doesn't come out right there where the John Jay crosswalk is, is an improvement.
Right, and I would agree with that. And I'm gonna be honest, with regards to the initial discussions that we had with the owner, seemed to be positive, but as it, as it kinda, kinda came through, the reality is, is that it just wasn't able to be put together. So, not, not based upon any willingness on our part.
I mean, is, is there anything we can do?
Well, I think we can make sure that this plan includes the ability to do that in the future, and then it's probably not something that you can change any of this site plan without an application before us on, on Archway. So we can prepare for it in the future, but there's probably nothing to...
But this board can't contact Archway and say, we think this would be a good idea.
I guess Tom, I would defer you, I mean, we don't typically reach out specifically to a joint group.
Well, we could always contact them to see what their thoughts were on it, you know, to verify, not to verify, but to see if their interest can't be renewed.
Yeah.
Maybe you give me a contact person.
Sure, sure.
When there are students coming out of John Jay, that little square of space is just a disaster waiting to happen.
Okay.
Well, I don't think the intent was ever to funnel traffic through the back of the gas station.
Was to give an alternative exit.
An alternative exit, not to funnel traffic through the gas station.
Right.
People are generally gonna go out 52 unless they have the reason to go into the gas station.
Right, but my point was, every single car, even one, one or two fewer cars is a...
I get it. I just wanna make sure that people understand, this is not a way to funnel traffic through the back of the gas station. It's...
For me, it was more the deliveries. Right now, with the large vehicles, it's hard. Sometimes with cars being blocked in or things like that, it would have given them an ability to have a better circulation and try to reverse.
Oh, I agree with that 100%. I mean, I don't just, I just wanna make sure people understand it wasn't meant.
Yeah.
As a redirection. Laurie, that's, and I understand your point, Jason, and that, that actually was the crux to really reach out to them initially, to try and get better delivery, trucks access to the site and that kind of stuff. But it would have been a positive, you know. I, I think the next point to make is probably one that's more of an important point as it relates to maybe some of the people who are here tonight, but is an integral part of what we're doing here related to the improvement of this site. The intent is to take the existing water line, the Shenandoah water line, runs along 52 on the opposite side, the south side of 52, or underneath 52, and bring it across the road, okay? We are not allowed to open cut, open trench cut 52 here. It's, it's a high-volume road. So that has to be done in order to serve this site, and to allow, for the potential to allow to move forward, because there's some issues related to this site under the previous owner, related to some existing residences in the back and so forth. So this is going to help with allowing that to happen.
So are you just crossing 52, or are you coming up Lake Drive? How far are you going with that?
What we have shown is we've shown coming underneath 52, and taking the water line and serving it to the rear of our property. That's, that's what our plans have, have always shown.
Okay.
Nobody can hear anything in this room. I tell John this all the time. You gotta talk right into it, Mike, or there's...
Try it up.
Let me, let's talk about the water again.
Yes.
Okay. The intent of, of this plan is to bring the water beneath the water line, beneath Route 52, which now is, is on the south side of 52, across underneath 52, and extend that main, okay, to the back corner of our property. That's what our plans have always shown, and that's where our intent is, okay? We understand that there's some issues related to some homes in the back that currently are under treatment systems. We actually have done some research into that. We understand there's a total of eight homes right now in the rear that are being treated with filter systems. This certainly is a great head start in order to allow that to continue, in, or to be able to be served. I want to make a point too, that the owner that we have now, the owner that's making this application, is different than the owner was six months ago, eight months ago, okay? There has been some discussions between the old owner, the new owner, as well as DEC, in order to try and facilitate the ability to possibly serve and extend the water main to serve in the back, okay?
Right.
There is actually a meeting tomorrow, believe it or not, at the DEC with representatives there, and these, some of these discussions are going to take place. So, you know, I don't, I think it's been clear, in terms of the commitment from the current owner, in terms of extending that water main to the back through there, that's, that was never intended as part of this, but certainly there's the ability that, that that may happen in the near future. I just, I want to make, make it clear, for anybody who's here tonight that thinks that we're gonna be spending that water main all the way to the rear to serve existing homes that have those existing problems, that's, that's kinda being worked out in the mix right now, with regards to remediation and the previous owner.
And as, as we adjourn and continue this public hearing, you'd be able to give us more information on that as far as exactly what's gonna happen and where you're going? But as of right now, you're taking it to the rear, rear property.
Correct. Unfortunately, because of the timing of this, I wish this meeting was one day earlier, because I think I would be able to have a lot more to tell. But that's the way it worked out, and certainly, hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have more to tell.
I just have a quick question. Are you able to supply the gas station with a well on site?
Are we able to?
Yes. As far as your water supply?
I would think, meeting current separation requirements is related to, you know, for public water supply. I mean, we do have a spot, a rectangular spot in the back rear location there, Scott, but knowing that, how the DEC is in terms of separation distances from septic and wells and so forth, we would be hard-pressed. It's a different type of site, because we have an existing well out there now, so there's, usually there's obviously some willingness to be able to work and, and, you know, provide additional treatment measures and things such as that, because of, again, being an existing site, but...
That's what I'm asking, whether it's your intention to use your well, or are you intending to connect to the Shenandoah line and get your water from the Shenandoah line?
We were intending to connect.
That would require the formation of a district, and I don't know if the town would form a district just for the gas station without taking care of the eight homes.
Right, well, we, we, I would, I would think that they wouldn't.
So?
And, and we have actually looked into, and taken a look at some of the numbers related to Shenandoah, in terms of what they currently use. We actually recently had gotten the information related to how many users do have or on filters back there. So I presume that if anything, in terms of the district expansion occurred, it absolutely would incur that, and maybe even more, depending on how that worked out. But again, forming the district doesn't necessarily bind to the actual construction of the line, in terms of the cost and so forth.
And so you asked?
Mike, just 'cause I don't know. The contamination of the eight homes and the filtration systems are the result of, I don't, do you know? 'Cause I don't.
Effectively, as I understand, this station was a contributing cause.
Okay.
Yeah. There, there is, and I don't want to speak out of terms, but the, the previous owner currently now pays for originally those filter systems going in, as well as the maintenance and, and the testing and so forth. So that is an ongoing thing that occurs.
Is that the MTBE they used to use in ancient days?
I, I can't speak into the actual...
MTBE. Sorry, I just didn't know, so I thought I'd ask.
I just, it's the DEC contamination and so forth, you know.
Okay. Obviously, Mike, we'll be anxious to understand exactly how that all works out, so we'll, we'll just keep, keep on top of it. If you, once you have documentation, if we can bring it in for the file here, and we'll, we'll certainly discuss it when we adjourn.
We intend to. Just, I guess, two quick other notes too. I know the town traffic consultant has been working with our office of Brian, looking at counts, looking at impacts, looking, you know, we do show some traffic improvements out here, and always have, in terms of modifying some of the entrance and exit locations, narrowing down, widening up, turning lanes and so forth. That's still a work in progress. The DOT does have this plan, okay? They have not commented on it yet, and we were hoping that, again, we would have something sooner than later, but actually, I'll defer to the directors working with them directly. working with them directly here.
Basically, what you're proposing is closing one of the Route fifty-two access easements and have a right-in, right-out on fifty-two? And then an exit, sorry?
The entrance location closer to the intersection would be closed on fifty-two. The access point closer to the intersection of Lake and fifty-two is proposed to be closed as part of this.
What about the Lake Drive entrance?
Just bear with us, folks, we'll open up for public comments. I'm sorry, but we want to make sure we get your names for the minutes and everything. And Mike, then the station as proposed right now is going to have, you have a right-in, right-out on fifty-two and two entrances on Lake?
Correct.
To facilitate if someone's using an exit, exit escape lane in the drive-through and then also for most of the traffic probably to be able to exit if they're going to be headed eastbound?
Correct.
Lori, it's not just a right-in, right-out on fifty-two, it's a left-in also.
Left, I'm sorry.
Full access in, right-outs.
Thank you.
Correct. The eight homes that have the filtration systems, they're being maintained by the prior owner of the property?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, fine, I just liked to know the background. So, I'm also curious, I was going to ask Tom next about the remediation law that East Fishville has and how it applies to this kind of site when you have houses that are contaminated back with filtration systems.
Well, the special permit application that allows them to redo this site requires, number one, that there's remediation being done by a directive from D E C or D P A, which there is in the tank cleanup. And it also requires that there be a community benefit from this project, and that's been deemed to be the water supply. As the town engineer indicated that, I think it's more complicated than we can really get into tonight. I think they, this applicant is trying to develop the site and would bring over the water main. There's the D E C and the prior owner who may bear responsi, or the prior owner may bear responsibility for then going from that point into taking care of the eight homes or whatever it is.
Okay, so, the new owner would maybe, the old owner would do?
After the D E C meeting tomorrow, there'll be clarity on that, and at the next public hearing, that would be available.
Thank you.
And also, we have a remediation plan in two weeks. Been designed between my environmental engineer and the D E C at the site to clean up almost thirty thousand gallons of water every day. I'm committed to that.
So, you're going to pump and...
We are working on it.
Well, that's the groundwater contamination, right. There's two parts, there's the groundwater contamination and then there's the new drinking supply, right?
Is that the work that's being done out there now? Is that the work that's being done out there now?
Yeah, the tank was removed, I guess they started...
Yeah, I think it's the soil erosion.
There's a D E C consent order in the file, and what the work that's going on there is covered by that consent order right there.
Is there anything that's still pending before this board that's slowing those efforts?
That's what? I'm sorry.
Is there anything that is part of this proceeding that we could pull ahead to speed those efforts to clean up and remediate that site? Or is that proceeding without incompetence?
I think it's fair to say that it's...
The cleanup and remediation plans will be ongoing in two weeks from now. Designed, they just approved by the D E C, and we purchased the equipment. It should be installed within two to three weeks at max.
I think to answer your question, what's happening here with this board as it relates to this site is effectively kind of an independent thing than the consent owner from D E C. So, there's nothing here that's holding that up for moving ahead and getting done what needs to get done to make it right out there as related to that.
One other legal-type question. Is there any kind of bond or fund been set up to maintain these systems and these houses?
Well, from what we were made aware of is that there is money that's being held in escrow at the direction of D E C.
Okay.
And I think that's money that D E C is now going to attempt to resolve the remediation.
Okay, so they could use that money then for supplying the water?
That's our understanding, right.
Sorry, dumb questions, I need other things made, obviously.
No, 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 no dumb questions. The D E C collect most three point five of a penny from every gas sales. We're supposed to go out to Superfund for this cleanup. Unfortunately, D E C is not using that money for cleanup. So, the homeowners have to call up the D E C and force them to do what they have to do. But they are collecting the fees every month, every day. Every time you pump gasoline, you're paying for the cleanup.
Mike, I know we just covered up the picture, but let's make sure, I want you to walk us through what the building looks like, the elevations, and if you have a picture of the canopy as well.
I have a question about...
Part of this is also our hearing for the look and feel of the building itself.
Hey, Michael, I have a question about the pump configuration. Does that allow for larger vehicles to go through the pumps, like trailered vehicles and landscaping trucks with trailers and stuff like that?
You know, what we've done is we've laid out based upon parking area, turning radiuses. We've concentrated more on the tractor-trailer, you know, aspect and so forth. You know, have we laid it down for guys pulling landscape trailers through? I don't know if we've actually done that.
To use the pumps, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, to physically use them. I think if you actually, they had to use them, you'd have to, you know, you'd have to look for a double bay that was open like you typically do at any station and have to pull them both.
But the height of the canopy is going to allow it, it's just a matter of whether the traffic at the site at the time.
And getting to the inside pumps to be able to do that, maneuver to do that?
I would think so, we can get that on paper for you, so it's clear.
It's just something the F A B brought up.
Okay.
Just take us to the building itself, if you would, and if you have a picture of the canopy as well, that'd be great, otherwise, maybe we can bring that through.
What we have here is the front elevation of the drawing, or of the building. What we are doing right now is we are currently in front of the Architecture Review Board. We've made one run with them, that was last month. We're in front of them again this Thursday, okay? The elevations that you see in front of you reflect some of the concerns and comments that they had related to the building. We are also, as again, a part of this, we're proposing a brand-new canopy, okay, along the front. You know, I think part of this, too, with the Architecture Review Board as well, is because of, you basically have exposure on all sides of this building, we took the architecture element and ran it all the way around the perimeter, okay? It wasn't just, you know, we have, you know, one side or three sides, and then we kind of blank out the back, like sometimes happens. So, that was taken into consideration. This is the canopy proposal that's going to sit in the front.
Does the lighting follow some of the recommendations in the Greenway, or are you doing something different with the lighting?
Well, I think it will be LED lights, LED lights will come on three sets.
And then coming back, if you'd just walk us through the pictures. The first one I know is the front of the building facing fifty-two. Show us which side's facing Lake, which side's facing Archway.
Okay, because it's kind of, if you can tell from the site plan, it's kind of an oddly-shaped building. But what you'll notice here, we have a rear, effectively a rear elevation, but the two points, the rear, rear of the building... So, effectively, what you're moving in on most, it's the right and left here, sides, elevation and so forth. But again, you can see, and you can tell by, right, there's the drive-through window location.
Do you have a view that just shows the building from Lake, or... So, this would include the, that's got to be Archway, right? And that's going to be your pickup window?
There's your left, there's your left-side elevation.
Questions or comments, other questions or comments from board members? Brendan, Michelle, or Joe, anything we should go over before we open up for public comment?
I think we'll just give an update of a couple of traffic things. We are finalizing the larger truck tracking diagrams through the site. It does accommodate a W B sixty-two off of Route fifty-two and through the site. It wouldn't, it would exit onto Lake Drive, but the only way to access a, the tractor trailer to access would be off of fifty-two. As Mike said, the traffic study is in progress. We are still evaluating some of the data that we have and collecting some additional, some additional data. But what we do know at this particular point in time is that the A M traffic, and mainly because it's right near the school, is what is critical at this site. And the critical movement out of here would be the left turn off of Lake Drive in the A M. Would be the movement that we're going to look closest at. We're looking at the school traffic. We're reviewing and analyzing the site-generated traffic. It's a mixed-use facility with a gas station, a convenience store, and a drive-through coffee shop. So, it's, there's not a lot of available data to clearly define how much traffic it generates. So, we're taking a good, hard look at that. I think that's sort of, you know, an overview of the traffic, and, you know, we can answer any questions when they, when they come up. The, as Mike also mentioned, these plans are at the D O T. Everything the D O T has requested to review is in front of them right now. They've had it for a good period of time now, a few weeks. The only information we have from them is that they, it will be reviewed, you know, in a timeframe when they get to it. But it's there, and we hope to see that review shortly in the next, in the next week or two.
Are you anticipating, I know it's, you can't predict it, but are you anticipating any issue? Or do you think this, because it eliminates one of the access points?
Yeah, we have met at the site with the D O T permanent engineer, who, you know, who understands the development and likes what's being proposed. But it does go back to the main office in the Traffic and Safety Division for them to take a closer look at these commercial developments. But the site, we, I think the, they might, if they ask for more data and they might want to, you know, when the traffic impact study is completed, they're probably going to want to see that to make sure what the impact is, you know, at the intersection of Lake Drive and fifty-two.
And any other updates before we open for public comment?
I think we, I mean, our letter was pretty self-explanatory, a lot of clarification and waiting on D O T input on the entrances and the traffic review. We also had a note about the water line and getting those additional details. And the plans have a note about the town, you know, coordinating those details with the town and the engineering department. I guess, as far as the information with the D E C meeting, if we can receive an update on that meeting or possibly even attend, I guess we'd like to be able to coordinate that.
That's the meeting you're having tomorrow, Mike?
That's the meeting that's happening tomorrow for the council, the new owner council, the new owner.
Okay. Okay. And if we receive documentation from the D E C or recommendations, that sort of thing, just let's make sure we get them in to our file. What I'd like to do is we'll open up for public comment now, and if we could, as members of the public want to come up, we have a sign-in sheet here so we can capture your name for our minutes, so come on up. And more than, if there's a few people who want to speak, you can sign up, we'll call you up in the order that you sign up on the sheet. And then, when we call your name, you can come right up to the podium. I'm sorry, maybe you can come on, I know you're the first one, so. No, no, that's quite all right.
Do I state my name?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Barbara Stuck. I live back in the development behind this proposal. I have to say, it's a very nice-looking building, and I'm glad that they're going to be making improvements. But I do have some concerns that I hope are addressed at future public hearings. I think this is a very simple explanation of a very complex situation. And I think there are two areas of concern that most of us that live in there are concerned with. But I'm only speaking on behalf of myself. One is the water issue. I think it really, we really need clarification about where that line is going, who it's going to affect, how it's going to affect the people that are presently being helped or whatever by the previous owner, how this, another gas station on the corner, if the first one caused a lot of pollution, what's being done so that this one does not? And it sounds like you're doing things so that doesn't happen, but I think we need some more clarification. My biggest concerns are the traffic and the safety. I heard you say you did a study about the traffic at the A M and all of that. That whole intersection now is unsafe with kids coming back and forth from John Jay, people in Dunkin' Donuts, cars going in and out of the gas station. I think that really has to be addressed. They took away the traffic light on Rethel and fifty-two to get out of our development at certain times of the day. That was how you did it. Now, that traffic light isn't there. Certain times of the day, if you want to go, want to go left, you could sit for ten minutes. I spoke with the Department of Transportation, and the man told me that when the West complex is reopened, maybe they will put that light back, but that it's safer now than to have people stopping on fifty-two. That makes no sense to me. I think we need to know how many pumps are going to be there. I mean, I heard a lot of talk about entrances and exits and Lake Drive. It's a zoo now. I think it really has to be addressed specifically and carefully, I can't believe it, I'm shaking, to make it safe. To make it safe, because the way it sounds now doesn't really sound very safe to me. I mean, it looks lovely, and that's a huge improvement, but also, those of us who live in there have to get in and out of the development, and it's almost impossible now. And it's really not safe now. So, if you add all of this, I really think it has to be really looked at and analyzed carefully, or it's going to be a disaster, and it's not going to be safe.
You mentioned certain times of the day where you can wait up to ten minutes. Do you have a feel for what times is it, in the mornings, in the evenings, are there different times?
Between four and six at night, it's terrible. When John Jay is getting, going in or arriving or dismissing, it's terrible. In the morning, there's a lot of traffic, and if they reopen the West complex, that's going to bring even more traffic into that area. So, I really think traffic is, traffic and safety, not just flow. I mean, you can easily figure out how it's going to flow, but is it going to flow safely? That's my concern, because I have a concern now because the kids cross in the traffic light where you're supposed to stop the light screen, and they cross anyway. So, that whole area really is not very safe now. And I don't know if going into Archway Plaza is the answer. I'm not a traffic person, but...
What do you think of the idea of the exit of Archway cutting across?
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that helps.
Point where it goes, and we just go, so you would, so in other words, the cars in the back of Archway would have the option going out to Lake?
And then coming, yeah, coming out to Lake, that's just putting more traffic on Lake, so I don't really know. I don't know if that's safer or not. I don't have enough understanding of how that works to know if that's a good option. And I'm not so sure why we need a drive-through, because sometimes when you have drive-through, I know there's a gas station and a store like this down near Graymore on Route nine. At certain times of the day, it is horrendous. And if you have a, I don't know, it just seems like an awful, I mean, it's a lovely building, but it's an awful lot going on there, and there's a lot going on there already. If they do it right and really think about safety, I think it could be okay. But if not, I don't really know. So, thank you for listening. How many pumps are supposed to be there? Four pumps. And how many hours would the gas station be open? So, you could have...
So, with four pumps, so it's eight filling spots, because each pump has...
Oh, eight filling spots, that's right, four pumps, eight filling spots.
What you might want to talk about is the rotation of the pumps.
Originally, when we proposed the pumps, we got them planted in toward the building. We did a couple iterations with the board, and now they're actually lined up facing. So, when you pull in, you're facing the building, you're facing fifty-two.
It's the pulling in and out that really is going to be tricky, because even people coming out of that gas station, if they want to go left, how are they going to do that? I don't know.
They have to exit onto Lake.
You know, they have to exit onto Lake, and then when they get to the end of Lake, they're not going to be able to get out either, because we're going to be sitting there waiting to get out. So, I don't know, I just don't know. So, these are things that I think in the future, you have to look at.
I appreciate you giving us the times where you're seeing the backup now, because one of the things we've been looking at is how, how do we assess the traffic in that area? We've been taking some traffic counts and things, but we want to make sure we capture, Brendan, I'm just... We've got three, the arrival and dismissal of John Jay, and now, and four to six P M., so if we're taking additional counts.
And I also think that coming... Oh, at lunchtime, too, they're reminding me, it's a mess. It's a mess a lot of the day. And also, coming east on fifty-two to come, to make a left into Lake Drive, would be good to have a turning lane there. I asked the D O T about that, they said there wasn't enough room. There are yellow lines there that all, that everyone uses as a turning lane. So, I don't know if they need more line for turning lanes than yellow lines. But I think that the room is already there, that might alleviate some of it. But I don't know how you're going to get all these people in and out, because getting in and out now is not easy or safe, so, thank you.
I'm sorry, what I want to make sure we do is let's have you come up with a finding.
Yeah, I think, well, that's my husband, and we've talked, what? We, well, we've talked, how would you control the traffic? Would they put another traffic light there? I don't know, because they turned off the one at Rethel, so there's really nothing, there's nothing to help the traffic, especially if it's going left onto fifty-two. And Archway Plaza is already a zoo getting in and out of, and then the kids are coming in at the high school. You really have to look at that.
Just a couple of things to add to some of your points is...
Good, thanks.
That's certainly something that'll be looked at to be evaluated, is the warrants for a traffic signal. We have requested accident data, both from the East Fishville Police Department and from the New York D O T to take a look at accidents, what type of accidents, pedestrians, and so forth. We don't have that data yet, but we will get it and analyze it. We have performed some manual turning counts where we actually were out there and physically counted cars in the A M peak periods from six-thirty to nine, and the P M periods from four to six. We also put machine counters out.
I saw the machine counter.
And we're going to, and we're actually getting more data now, too, because actually, in these winter months, it's difficult to get data, because every time it snows, we have... have to run out and pull, pull the loops out. So we're still in the process of getting some additional data at different locations so that we make sure that we have, understand the traffic for the full day, not just in those hours where we manually count.
I think those are good things. It's good to know that you're looking at.
As I said, it is, you know, we are in the process of looking at all that data, and as we look at it, we realize we might need some more data, and that's what we've been doing, getting some additional.
So if there are more public hearings, we will be notified? I mean, not notified, you put up one of those. I have a suggestion about the signs, too. The signs that you put up for the public hearings, you have to stop driving to read them. And the one at the gas station, the way it was positioned, the way it was angled, you really couldn't read it unless you stopped the car. The way it was angled on the corner, you know.
We'll ask the applicant to adjust that.
You know, so.
But, but just so, just so, just so you know, what will happen is tonight, we'll, we typically wouldn't, wouldn't close a public hearing, we're still collecting a lot of information, so we'll, we'll set an adjourn date tonight, so you'll know before we leave tonight what the next.
I think you need much more information on the water situation, too. You know, I think it's, it's all good, but it's not really specific enough, and there are a lot of people that are concerned about what's going to happen to their water. So thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
And thanks for gathering data, that's good, too.
At one of the earlier meetings, didn't someone make the statement that this wouldn't generate additional traffic on 52? It would just be, it would allow gassing up at that location, but not increase traffic on the road? Or is my recollection?
That seems impossible.
It's, it's a combination. Because it's a gas station convenience store and a drive-through facility, a lot of the generated traffic on the site would be from pass-or-buy traffic. So you're not necessarily putting, but that's part of the traffic. Another part of it is you will always generate some traffic. So part of it would be pass-or-buy traffic. Developments of this type, it's often, you know, more than 50%, 50, 60% of the traffic is from pass-or-buy, and the remainder of it is, is generated, you know, that comes to that site for that.
So you'd be, so you're saying that if you took the traffic situation as it is now, at the peak hours, you had about 40% for generated traffic that would not otherwise be there?
Yes.
Yes and no. I mean, it, I mean, that, that's the concept, but the actual specifics and the percentages, they vary even based on, you know, the type of, the type of use.
How do you estimate?
A drive-through has, has actually a higher percentage of pass-or-buy, you know, a higher percentage of pass-or-buy traffic than a gas station convenience store. So it's sort of a, you know, you have to do a composite of all that to come up, and I couldn't tell you that it's 40%, but there is some percentage that is going to be site-generated traffic, and there's going to be some percentage, which a majority of the traffic would be not generated traffic, but it's going to be pass-or-buy traffic.
But it's not going to be passing by, it's going to be going in and out.
Going in and out, and it is going to go into this?
That's the difference.
Come out on the drive.
We're talking about generated, though, is not that?
No, I know what that means, but.
Make a special trip, go to that direction, drive.
No, I understand that, but.
They might be, because they probably would be more reasonable now with the gas prices around. Any day you get on, we would have to go back to two years to that place.
You shouldn't be talking.
Honey, you can't talk. If you don't mind, just add your husband's name next to your name.
Okay, I'll go put his name with it. And I'll, I'll sit down. One suggestion I would make is that this be over there, so that when someone is making a presentation to you and we're listening, we could all hear, because in all honesty, we are older, but I couldn't hear a lot of what was said, and that's not fair to him either. Or if you had a microphone that you could stand there, that's just the teacher in me says, if you want us to hear, we have to be able to hear.
Well, and normally, too, we have the plan up so some, we can use a laser pointer, and we can talk into the mic. We're just a little bit with the AV out.
Okay, thanks.
But thank you very much for the comments.
Yeah, I always thought Mike would make a good loud jack, walking around with a microphone.
You have to go there?
Yep. Sir?
Surely did.
Your husband?
He already signed in.
I didn't hear the comments you made about two years ago. I, I just heard something about.
We're talking about data and traffic getting out of that station. Any day you try to collect, we have to go back at least two years, because that takes a closure between you and us. Any day you collect over the last year, you're not going to do a fix for the traffic going in on that gas station.
Just to clarify, we're, we're collecting traffic data and counts right now, so.
Well, even now, it's only a store. It's a lot of gas data.
Right, but just to, just to make up, clarify that point, there is, you, you count the traffic that's out on the roadway network now, and you, and there's a portion of it that's newly generated traffic, that gets added in. And even if, let's just say there was no gas station or no development there, and this was being proposed entirely brand-new, we, we have mechanisms and there's, you know, there's studies and manuals that tell you what a development, what type of development, how much traffic would generate. So we're, we're using that data, you know, for specific, for developments of this type.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I'm Alan Collodiner, I live at 11 Circle Drive. First of all, thank you for taking, getting this property cleaned up. Thank you. I have some serious concerns about two, two issues. One, the water. The owner that the proposed or new owner bought it from polluted the land with faulty equipment. We were told by the town that that would be cleaned up by the prior owner. We are now going into a third owner, and it's still not being cleaned up. Whether it's the DEC or the EPA, we don't really know. We were told by the town that they were going to bring water and feed the entire, and create a district back in Lake City. That has not happened. I am not one of the 11 homes, but we did have tests going on for a number of years, because the plume moves, and once they disturb the property, nobody knows where that plume is going to go. And what, yes, it was MTBE. Cutting through to Archway doesn't solve any problem, all it does is push more traffic out onto Lake Drive. I would recommend anybody on this board to go take a look at what goes on there in the morning. You have students going through that closed car wash area, coming out onto Lake Drive in order to make the U-turn, to then make the right into the school. So it is a cluster of just people going in every which way, in every direction. If you're going to cut, cut the entrance into the gas station down to one, they're going to go in, and they're going to do the U-turn onto Lake Drive. However, you're now going to have cars sitting on Lake Drive trying to flip into the drive-through that we've just now heard about. There was never any discussion of any kind of drive-through being contemplated for this site. So that's going to create more traffic coming into Lake, making a right into the property, getting in line to sit there waiting to get their cup of coffee. There's serious concerns of throwing more and more traffic into Lake City. What you're also going to see is people now go through Rethel, come down Birch, and, and cut through the parking lot and park in our neighborhood. So there's a whole host of concerns regarding traffic flow, and I, I disagree with you that you can have an accurate count when there's no activity on that property today. Because two years ago, it was twice as bad. So without knowing the traffic flow and the amount of kids in traffic that are going in there, I think just because you have other, other, trying to, other studies that have been done, this is a unique parcel, because there's one way in with four entrances and exits off the site. The other issue we now have is now you're going to have people coming into the old Robert Mark Building, which is the professional building, coming in off of Lake, and they circle in to come through the back of that property and use that property as a cut-through to come out onto Lake. So you have all of this traffic coming into one road where it's impossible to get in or out in the morning, during lunchtime, when the school is out, and then when IBM closes up. You also have activities and, and things going on at the school during, during the evening. A 24-hour gas station is news to everybody in the city, in the area. They had always closed at 8 o'clock, so what's that going to mean for people that would typically not, not be stopping? What's that going to do for crime or drive-through or pass-through into our neighborhood? We're somewhat secluded, there's one way in, one way out. And the, the concern with Rethel now is that I have no way to get out of my neighborhood. I can make a right, I can do an illegal U-turn into the old IBM site in order to head back east on 52, which you have to do four or five times a day. So we, there's a ton of traffic concerns, but thank you for buying the property and fixing it up. I want to get that clear, that it's a mess. So, thank you.
Alan, yeah, I have a question. Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. No, man. You made a comment about people parking and then walking into your neighborhood.
Yep. They park behind the station, they park behind the Robert Mark Building, they were parking on Birch and down Lake, but the town came in and put up signs, but you still have cars all through this area behind Archway, behind the old Zomarios, students.
Students, okay.
So do you think by making this configuration, is that going to help it or make it worse?
It's going to hurt. It's going to just create more, it's just, it's going to, have you ever seen the Clover lease in Los Angeles? That's what this is going to turn into, with just people going in and out of all entrances.
But today, but today you have more entrances and exits.
But you don't have an active property. There's nothing.
He can open that up as an active property.
There's nothing going on there right now.
Right now, but he can't reopen it as a gas station today.
Of course, we hope he does.
And the car wash, if he wants.
And the car wash, also.
Nobody's stating that. The traffic flow with pushing all your, all your traffic out on the lake won't work, especially with a drive-through.
Would you like him to leave all of those entrances and exits open?
I'd like him to close the ones on Lake, but that's not going to happen.
I think you, you will lose your hangout to the campus a day, for the six hours a day. Maybe that's your problem.
No, he, he works on my car, but I don't hang out with him.
I see you over there at the gas station with that, with my tenant.
No, you don't.
Because you hate to see the tenant going out.
Absolutely not. And you can talk to Ray, because I haven't been in there. I have not been in Ray's shop since May.
Okay.
Play those games.
I've seen you over there.
Okay. All right, folks, folks. Is there anybody else on our list? Or is there anyone else who'd like to?
Susan.
Susan?
Hi, I'm Susan Collodiner, I live at 11 Circle Drive. Just to add a couple of things, did I hear mention of tractor trailers somewhere in there? What, the capacity of tractor trailers, what, what are they there? That the gas station would be able to accommodate?
Fuel.
Excuse me?
Fuel delivery, for one, usually would be a tractor trailer.
Okay, well, right.
Possibly, there's a convenience store on the site, I'm not sure.
So they're talking, you're talking about tractor trailer traffic as well in there? I mean, I understand deliveries.
For delivery.
So the gas station itself will not accommodate tractor trailers or big trucks?
It'll accommodate the tractor trailer moving through the site. Can you pop these?
For deliveries.
For deliveries. It's not a truck stop, just for deliveries. Fuel, I think fuel delivery would be outlined for once or twice a week, off-peak hours, and I think it means the world to us, once or twice a week, trying to be off-peak hour deliveries.
So those tractor trailers several times a week would also be exiting out onto Lake Drive?
If you have the opportunity, it can be configured two ways. One would be coming in, making a left in, swinging out on the lake. Option two, coming down through the site, through Lake, we have to lock.
The problem with them, with the tractor trailers exiting onto Lake Drive, is that they're not most likely going to be able to make that turn. I mean, it's, it's a narrow road.
What we've done is, and Brendan from Hudson Engineering can speak to it, they've actually overlaid, they actually have raised templates that you can develop on CAD, technically. And you can actually swing a tractor trailer through the site, and that's why if you look at the entrance in the rear, and the entrance right here is a little bit wider, so they allow you to start to swing inside the site, and then you can, by the time you hit Lake Drive, just look at the top lines of the plate.
So in addition to the, the additional traffic that will be forthcoming, we will also have tractor trailer traffic. And, and please keep in mind, students from the school are driving in and out at all hours of the day and the evening, and they are students, they're not, you know, I have some myself, they've, you know, had some myself years ago, but they're not the most aware drivers. And that is a very big, it's already very, very difficult to get in and out with the traffic coming out of the gas station and people making a right or a left onto Lake Drive, whereas the people coming, making a left, coming out onto Lake Drive from the gas station, don't realize that there are cars coming in onto Lake Drive from 52 West, you know, on 52, making that right. So it's already a difficult situation where the person on 52 who's trying to get into Lake Drive has to stop and wait for the, the driver to come out of Lake Drive. So that's going to be another issue. And just one other thing I want to bring up is the issue of the darkness. There are certain times of the year when, when the kids are going to John Jay, it's pitch black in the morning. So it's just something else to keep in mind. I mean, I am, again, I'm very glad that, I like the plan, I like the building, I think it's, you know, really nice that something nice is going to be going in there, but the traffic is truly going to be a nightmare, an absolute nightmare. So the drive-through, well, like I said, I, I don't see any positive outcome in terms of the traffic situation there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have someone else on our list? Signers, or? Okay. If you want to speak, come on up, I'll just have you sign into our, on our clipboard, and you can come right up to the podium.
Thank you. My name is Marge Horton, and I've had the pleasure of representing these people that live in Lake City since April of 2002 to the county legislature. My husband, Bob Horton, represented them eight years before I did. I just wanted to give you a little information about the water contamination. These people have been very patient. They've gone through several owners of the gas station, and congratulations to you, because you have cleaned up that area. I also question the 24-hour, not a gas station being open, because there might be a night that I come home and need gas in a gas station. I live off Palin Road. But these people have gone through so much with the water contamination, and they've had promises, but no delivery. They, you know, when I first came in, I think I was there about two weeks, Barbara, when I called the DEC. They're rude, they're arrogant, they don't want any questions, and then they don't want to give you answers. And they are going to need clean water that any of you, and I know, Russ, I know that you're having a problem with yours, I know that, but any of you would want to go home and drink clean water and not worry about, are your children going to be sick in the future? Are your grandchildren going to be born with problems? This can't happen. This is the United States of America, we're all entitled to clean water to drink. My question, because I know how these things sometimes end, if the pipes are going to be coming across 52, under 52, and the water's coming from the Shenandoah Road site, who's going to pay for the water? If these people get water, who's going to pay for it? Because I know for a fact that some of the people living down in that Shenandoah Road Superfund site were, I'll put it nicely, outraged by the price of the water. So this is something else to perhaps think forward, because I don't know that all of you know how long this problem has been. And yes, thank God, we don't put MTBE into the gasoline anymore, but that's there, that's there for a long time, it just doesn't disappear. Thank you very much, and thank you for all the attention that you've paid these people at this hearing, because that doesn't always happen, and it did tonight. So thank you very much.
We thank you for coming. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak for or against our John Jay gas station application? Okay. Mike, come on back up. Just a couple of things, I, I want to make sure we, we clarify. I know you'll get back to us on exactly what's going on with the water, so we know that'll be a future meeting.
Yep.
With regard to the, the new gas service at the site, is there something you can share with us, if not at this meeting, maybe at the next one? Just to clarify, the, I mean, I'm assuming a new regulation requires double, double hull tanks and things like that, just to give us some confidence that there's going that there's gonna be some testing there and making sure that the new tanks going in for the gas delivery are appropriate and not leaking, that sort of thing.
To go without saying.
There's a lot of regulation.
To go without saying, obviously, anything new that gets installed, new present day requirements. But what we'll do is, as part of our next submittal, we'll give you some backup details and so forth in terms of what those, those parameters and so forth are, to give you a level of comfort and, and provide a record for the public, so.
Tom?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, just, just a couple more. And then also, as far as the, as far as the use of the site, I just want to clarify, because I know we, we talked about tractor trailers. The pumps themselves, if a tractor trailer needs gas, is this going, is a tractor trailer gonna be able to pull up to this gas station and, and fill up their own gas tank? Or is this just tractor trailers for deliveries at the site? Okay, so we don't have the higher canopy that you would need for a tractor? This is gonna be a standard?
This, this may have a little bit of a higher canopy, just to swing right now the way we have to possibly swing in front of the building.
Okay. But not to stop and fill, so it's not supposed, it's not intended to be, I think you said it's not a truck stop, but I just want to be clear, it's also not intended to provide fuel to tractor trailers? This is just tractor trailers for delivery?
There's a diesel there. The gas station always sold diesel. Not a tractor trailer will stop there, it's for cars. For landscape, if somebody have a landscape.
Pickup, you know, the D10 is certain.
I'm just clarifying that it's not set up for tractor trailer to pull up the pumps.
It's not designed for tractor trailer.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because we were kind of talking about both, so, thank you. And then Brendan, you'll, you'll take care of just looking at the times of day, as, as we've heard now from the public with the, the times that are issued. And are we also doing the counts on the other roads that are the outlet for this subdivision? Or are we, I'm not sure it's necessary, but I, I know that with the light not being taken out by the bank branch there and...
We have encanted that at this point, but we'll take a look and see if it's warranted.
Okay. And then Mike, to clarify, it is 24-hour operation for both the gas station and the convenience or drive-through, or is, are some of them intended to have other hours of operation?
The intent was, and the, the site operates as a whole, so the intent was for 24-hour.
So one of the things I think we'd like to see then in the future is to understand the lighting plan, how, what that looks like on site. I understand the canopy's gonna have the LEDs full cutoff, but just show us what the lighting plan looks like around the rest of the site. We also had some mention of students that may be coming through the site at different hours. So if we need to just take a look at how pedestrians will walk from the back to the front, or I know you've got employee parking in the back, but if we think there's gonna be a common access there, let's just make sure we're hopefully putting something in the plan that allows that as safely as possible. Not that we can guarantee students will follow that plan, but we can at least provide something that looks decent.
If anybody concerned about the 24 hours of drive-through, you'll be able to close it down 11:12 PM. I have no problem closing it by 11:12 PM.
Okay.
But not in the shop.
Okay. Any other, any other comments from board members or anything else I missed in the?
I just would like to clarify something. This would be part of the Shenandoah water supply system.
If, if their plan comes back from DEC that's acceptable to the town board, then the town board would consider establishing a water district that would allow the, the water to be installed. But we don't have those details, and the presupposition here is that the plan is going to encompass a resolution for minimally those who are now being treated or filtered their water, and that the line underneath 52 to the back of the property would be sufficient to service a larger area, because that has always been the first key thing that you need to do, is to get the water source. But none of those details have been given to the town. We've had discussions, you know, from them, they've indicated that. I understand they have to go through the DEC thing, and I'm sure by the next public hearing or so, we'll have a better handle on it.
Because the comment I wanted to make was, the way things are now, they have wells with filtration systems that are paid for by DEC.
Right.
If the water line goes under 52 to the back of the property, let's assume the town picks up the cost of running the pipes.
No, no, you, no. This is, the, the pipes to take care of those folks who are on filters are gonna be borne by the responsible party, which is the prior owner of the property.
Okay.
And that is a DEC enforceable law. They have money in escrow, they do whatever they do. Those folks should not pay a nickel to be connected for the water supply.
Okay, so connection also would be part of the DEC model.
Correct.
Now, when it comes to...
Just like when the EPA did Shenandoah, the full cost of all the pipelines and the connections right into the basement of the house was paid for by IBM under the consent order with the EPA.
Okay. The only thing that the owners that currently pump and have paid for filtration then would pay for is the actual water usage, which would be comparable to what Shenandoah is paying now, which is large. I just thought we would address that, since you brought that up. And I wanted to get a clarification as to who pays for what.
I just think we're still waiting to see, though, when the actual plan comes back. There's the DEC involved in that, so as soon as we have more information, I think we'll go further with that discussion.
Yeah, but it's going to at least involve the homeowners in paying comparable water costs at best case to what they're paying in Shenandoah now.
I just want to add, the cleanup is going to be at the gas station. We're going to cut the source by 80% of the polluted underground water. We'll put an mediation plan over there. We're going to take all the bad soil out of there. That should reduce the level of the polluted water underground. But we have, we have a similar situation in Towne High Park. Some houses was polluted. The town came in, put the water line, they hook up everything with the DEC's money, then DEC went after the party who caused it, and the residents didn't pay a penny for it. Basically, I hooked up six houses myself. I wasn't responsible for six houses. I have one gas station logo, but the DEC picked it up and went after the source. The same situation is here. I'm bringing the main line across the street. It's a matter of liability issue for the future. The previous owner have, he's obligated to bring the water line to the houses, and, and whatever lawsuit, if somebody got sick and everything, they have to go after him. So it's, it's a legal issue more than the water line.
That's why I asked Tom.
Tomorrow, we have a big meeting. My attorney, Putinis' attorney, with the commissioner of the DEC, there's a meeting tomorrow over the liability issue.
Yes, my understanding of MTBE contamination is it's water soluble, and which means you virtually can't get rid of it, it just keeps diffusing and diffusing and diffusing.
Oh, I think you're putting in a filtration.
Well, first of all, there's a, there's a filtration there now at the plaza pumping 30,000 gallons a day. We add in another one, pumps 30,000 gallons a day. So between both of them will be 60,000 gallons a day to be filtered through the system. And the same time, when we dig underneath the canopy, the most of the pollution right now indicated underneath, the car wash. My intention, take the car wash off and get to the source, clean up all the bad soil and get it to the landfill. That should reduce it from my previous stations I did, between 70 to 80%.
The car wash pollution shouldn't be MTBE.
Well, it's not from the car wash, from the gasoline was, it's not from the gas, it's really the travel, from the tanks was linked.
We haven't adjourned yet. If you want to come back up, that's fine.
The water's being filtered, where is that filtered water going?
Back in the ground.
What happened to carbon? The gasoline comes out of the water from the underground water to carbon. Then we, we dispose the carbon out of the site.
And where does the water then go?
Back in the ground.
Back to the ground.
There is a pond. It's a pond. I don't care how cold it gets.
Come on up to, we can't hear you.
For years, because of that gas station, and I think IBM has a right to dump into Gildersley Brook also, that pond, I don't care how cold it gets, never freezes. When I moved in there in 1971, the kids used to ice skate on it then. You go there, remember a couple weeks ago, all those zero-degree temperatures we had for a week and a half? Not a speck of ice on it. Now, it's something, it's acting like an antifreeze in that and keeping that from freezing.
Okay.
And all that stuff is from that gas station and from that car wash.
Can we just capture your name for the minute?
Robert Suck.
Thank you.
I, I think it's been made abundantly clear, and I think it's, that there's issues regarding contamination out there, so.
Alright, I know we have, the next public hearing will be the Hopewell gas station, but Mike, if we can just talk about adjourn dates, I know Brendan, you need some time for the traffic. I'd like to have a little more of the traffic information nailed down.
Sure.
Mike, after the meeting tomorrow, I'm assuming you're gonna have a couple of follow-up meetings to figure out what you're doing with the water plan. I'd like us, at our next meeting, to be able to have a little bit more understanding of where, what we're proposing for the water. So how much time do we need for that?
Well, I would just want to say something about the water. The water is out of my control, and it's not the town control. It's between DEC, it's the DEC and the, and the health department issue. Something I cannot control it. I, I promised this town we'll put a part of the site plan, I would bring the water line to the property line. But the quality of the water, hooking up the water to the houses, I cannot promise. That's a DEC issue, and it's a big lawsuit that I'm dealing. And they're holding a lot of money, I'm the guy, and the previous Putinis for this purpose.
Okay.
And what's gonna happen tomorrow, I hope the outcome is, is good for everybody, because I want water for the gas station, because I don't want to pay for the filters. So if the previous owner, which is paying at least 30 to 40,000 a year to the DEC to maintain these filters, I'm sure he don't want to pay it.
Okay.
Because those filters cost about $550 a month to monitor it. Either DEC or somebody's paying for it, for the eight or the 10 houses.
Okay.
So they're paying 5, 5,000 to 6,000 a month.
We're sitting here February 5. Marge?
Marge.
You gotta start looking around, get your people. I think in order to get the materials in on time, be able to have enough information, I don't want to go through a number of iterations here. I'd like to have answers next time we come back. And I think over the next few weeks, we should be able to get some clarification on that from DOT, DEC, things such as that. So, I mean, you're looking at the second to the 16th, if those are your dates.
For March, it's, I think it's, it's the same date as February, right? So it should be the 5th and the 19th. April, I'm sorry.
Yeah, April.
Excuse me, April 2nd and 16th, you're right. Brendan, how's the sound for traffic? I want to make sure that you've got...
Yeah, I, I don't think, I think we can, we can certainly get through the, the traffic analysis part of it. I think the DOT is a little bit of a wild card, because I really think it's important that they get their initial review under their belt, so I definitely, but we're talking a month and a half, right?
April 2nd would be seven weeks or so.
Seven weeks.
Seven and a half weeks.
I, I, I have to believe that that's enough time, because I mean, it's been in front of them now for almost a month.
Right, we kind of, when we had gotten out of this last meeting, actually, that information was got to them pretty quick, so they're, they're hanging on to it, so.
Okay, so April 2nd?
Seems reasonable.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the John Jay gas station? Public hearing to April 2nd?
Second.
Thank you, John, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the declaration of lead agency in a public hearing for the Hopewell gas station on Route 82. Pam, we have everything we need to declare lead agency for the Hopewell gas station. Any adverse comments from the evolved agents? Okay, so do I have a motion to declare lead agency for the planning board? On the Hopewell gas station, I have a motion for the second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And do I have a motion to open the Hopewell gas station public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So folks that were, folks that were here for the John Jay gas station, you hear, April 2nd will be the next meeting where we hear this application again. And Mike, okay.
Okay.
Okay, folks. Let's start it again.
What was their comment?
It's ruining the landscape.
I'm sorry, we're just, we're picking up your conversation on the mic.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Hopewell filling station, what we have at the intersection of Route 376 and Route 82, we have the existing filling station that resides down there. Property is, is just over about a half acre in size. And what is part, is proposed as part of this proposal, a little bit different than the previous proposal, is, is a modification of the site. Effectively, the canopy that sits there now is proposed to remain. Alright, whereabouts on the previous one, that was proposed to be reconstructed. The existing building that does reside out there now is proposed to be removed and replaced with a new building of approximately 2,300 square foot size. The new building will effectively be pushed toward the rear of the building into the corner of the property, if you recall. This proposal also was subject to a few iterations largely related to the, to the building in terms of its size, location, and so forth. So the plan that's before us again tonight is something that, that was looked at through a few, course of a few meetings with, with this planning board. And, and here we are. The use, there is no drive-through proposed as part of this proposal. It is going to be convenience store, food mart type use. The, the plan that we have shown right here, if you recall, the last time we had been before this board, we were looking at it actually, in regards to the access, a couple of different proposals. And the one that we show here on the front of the board actually shows a new access, single lane, one lane access coming in off of 3, Route 376. And we had always proposed the intersection closer to 376 and 82, some modifications. But effectively, we had one plan with that, one-way access, one plan without, okay? When we circulated for lead agency, we provided those agencies both those plans and kind of a blurb about, you know, why we were providing two different plans. We, we have also submitted DOT, these, these plans from a time perspective are following the same timeframe as the John Jay station. We have not yet gotten something back from DOT related to their input on this access drive. They've had it just, again, just as long as the other. So hopefully, over the next course of the next hearing, we will hear something from them. Again, I'll let, I'll let that Brendan speak to some of the traffic-related circulation issues and so forth. At the end of the day, this is probably more of a straightforward application. We are planning on tying into the sewer, it's already been done, and obviously, we have central water on, on the site. One of the things differently than the other site, we are proposing on increasing some of our non-conformities related to our setbacks. And the reason is, is because we, kind of like a pie-shaped corner parcel here, it made sense. We kind of had some, let's call it dead space behind the building, we take that building and push it toward the back corner of the rear. And with that, we are currently in front of the zoning board of appeals, seeking certain variances, area variances. We've been in front of them once, and we will back in front of them a week from tonight in this room for a, for a public hearing. I will tell you that I think I can confidently state that the comments and feedback that we got from the zoning board was, was positive. Again, I don't want to speak on behalf of them in terms of whether those variances would be granted, but it seemed to be a positive meeting in terms of why we were looking for the variances we were and so forth. We also, as with the other project, we're in front of the architectural review board. We've held some of the, kind of the same architectural elements that you saw from the previous station. Some of the colors have changed, but down below here reflects some of that, or reflects the elevations. To date, we've resubmitted these. We're gonna be in front of them on Thursday night of this week, and hopefully, we can wrap those up. There's elevation of pools. So effectively, that's, that's, that's the context of this proposal.
Got any feedback with or without the ingress?
From 376.
From, from the DOT?
From, from any of the groups you circulate.
I saw something from county planning that wasn't so positive, but...
Sorry?
I, I saw, as part of the circulation of this project and the fact that we're sitting on a state highway, this has to be referral to county planning, county department of planning and development, I believe. I, I got, I saw their letter today. They're not overly enthusiastic related to this additional access.
Because it cuts the landscape strip.
Is it the loss of landscaping?
The landscaping, and it also cuts the sidewalk. They feel people will have to cross on the sidewalk to cross over. But they left it to your eminent decision.
Mike, from the DOT perspective, the main regional office, traffic and safety, has not offered any comment yet, but the permit engineer has reviewed the site, and he is in favor of the access on 376. But he's not the ultimate decision maker at the DOT, so.
I was gonna say, the other groups, I mean, let's not forget, the reason why is because of the proclivity to try to arc that turn coming out of there. Since we've started talking about it, I've seen it happen a couple of different times, of people, you know, making that right-hand turn and then trying to make an immediate right-hand turn to the station for the guy behind him. Thank you, sorry.
Other than that, with regards to issues, again, I think, you know, we can speak to some of the traffic and comparing what's there and what's proposed, not as much... the traffic and comparing what's there and what's proposed, not as much of an issue, I believe, as the previous application. But we are kind of at a point now with regards to moving through it, yes, we need to get something to fit it back in D O T. We have our zoning board, you know, meeting, we have to get our air B locked in, those things are all kind of moving along, and, you know, we would hope, you know, within the next few weeks, we would have some of that stuff wrapped up and we can kind of.
So all remediation done on the site?
The, we're not.
I know they went through a lot.
We're not handling that aspect of it, and I'm not going to say that there's still not currently.
I mean, is there anything under.
But, you know, a ton of soil has been removed, the tanks have been replaced, you know, it's constantly, it's continuously, continuously being monitored, okay? Mitch, can you give the board a status as related to the consent order and the application with regards to the tank remediation, remediation of the site with D E C?
With the D E C, we have no further action. We're still doing monitors, we're putting G R C into the, to the well, to the works. We cut it by seventy, eighty percent, as I say. There's some pollution underneath the building. If we knock it down, we've got to remove it. And I have to monitor it every three months, I have to get it cleaned up. And we put in chemicals. But the levels are came down by eighty percent from before, from a year ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we find, even we find uranium here.
Really?
Yeah. The alarm went off in the truck and everything, we have to mask it. And that's not, doesn't came from gasoline, but I end up cleaning it. And suddenly, we didn't cause, it's Mother Nature.
We hope it was Mother Nature.
Would you get the rate on gas in houses in someplace?
You're off here with a new word in your.
Mike?
So Waddell's crazy?
The, the cut, where it starts on three seventy-six, is that bank property when it goes through the island, or is that?
It's all in the right-ofway.
It's all in the right-ofway.
It's a right-ofway, okay.
It's all in New York State D O T right-ofway there.
And the people that own the right-ofway are the ones who say they're not crazy about it, but if we, no.
No, 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 the, the right-ofway is owned by the D O T.
Okay.
As part of this project, because of its location on a state highway, it's required by law to be referred to Duchess County Department of Planning. Their comments were, they weren't overly enthusiastic, but they offer comment. Ultimately, at the end of the day, it's the board's decision, as long as, you know, D O T goes along with it. That's, that, that record, it's a public record, that, that document's in there somewhere.
And Mike, you mentioned that you have some setbacks that you're requesting have larger variance than they have today, so you're scheduled to be in front of the Z B A, or you've already been in front of them?
We've been in front of them once, we were in front of them last month, and they were, they were comfortable enough to go ahead and schedule a public hearing, we're in front of them a week from tonight for the public hearing portion of the.
Okay. And then just take us again, like you did before, through the buildings, since part of our public hearing includes the improvements on the site.
Okay. Again, kind of an oddly shaped building, probably because these sites are so small. So what you're really looking at here is between the corner. Your right and left elevations are skewed on this, but effectively, those are your, your elevation. So you're looking, I would say, say, safe to say, when you're standing on Route, well, I guess it's three seventy-six there, staring straight into the property, that's your front elevation.
Okay.
That is the rear elevation, the back corner, okay? Right, so I guess right-hand side, left-hand side. The, the left-hand side is that portion which would probably face up against M and T.
It's actually going to be out, okay.
Right. And then we have our, our left-side elevations and our, and our right-side elevations. I think the left-side elevation probably will not be too visible. That's kind of the one that's tucked up against the property to the north.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the woodsy-type area.
Right.
And then the, the right-side elevation is effectively what you're likely going to see on that particular corner there on, on the M and T side.
To that point, are you anticipating clearing any trees as you move this building back, or is it mostly all flat right now? I hope you get.
I don't anticipate removing any, any trees, but I, I guess it's, it's just something to discuss to the A, the architecture review board at their initial meeting, brought up the question screening on, on that backside there. And I guess I want to also talk about the refuse enclosure.
Okay.
The, the, the site plan, there's, there's a fence that exists, and there's some evergreen shrubbery that exists along that line there.
Mm-hmm.
So from a, from a, from an aesthetic standpoint, the architecture review board had asked if there's the potential to provide for additional landscaping in that location. The building assets proposed in terms of its overhang is two foot off the property line, so it's going to make it real tough in that location there. We could probably have a little, we probably have a little bit of room between the parking spaces to, to, to provide some additional landscaping there, okay? And we had shown, one of the things. Concerns they have is refuge enclosure. We show up in this spot, we don't show a closure here because that's our handicap spot. We want that opposed to buildings we can. And so effectively, we have either the refuge enclosure here, or we have it on the far side. They had made a comment asking, and I don't know if, again, if it was provided to your rating or how that works, but they had asked the possibility of taking the refuge enclosure and moving it over to the other side. That's, it's really here nor there in terms of.
So from the perspective of getting a truck in to, to empty the refuse, you feel like it works on either side?
Yeah, it really does, and, and even probably if you get this turned, it may work better on the other side.
Okay.
No, it's tough to hide that anywhere, you know? That's, that's a problem because it's so.
So you're putting fencing around it now, or what's your?
We are.
Jane link slatted fence, just.
PVC, six-foot high. PVC solid, not, not see-through.
Okay.
I, I.
Okay.
That's, 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 that's up to you. I, I, we told them we would bring that to you, and you would go either way.
It was jointing property, Mike, is just basically, there's no one living there.
I, that's.
It's an abandoned.
That's a break-in.
Yeah.
But at some point.
In fact, the town has given notice, the property, about the dilapidated garage there, to get that taken in.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Brendan, quick traffic update before we move to the public comment?
Yep, at this site, actually, the, the focus is really on the, improving the access and circulation. When you look at generating traffic for development of a gas station and a convenience store, if you were to look at the square footage of the convenience store or the number of filling positions, number of filling positions is the more conservative approach, and since it's remaining unchanged, in theory, the site shouldn't generate any, you know, any additional traffic by having a somewhat larger convenience store. So, you know, if we, if we looked at it and, you know, tried to generate it just on the difference in the store, the pumps would still control. So, you know, we're not, we're not recommending a, a traffic study for that reason. The improved access, you know, I think, you know, my feeling would be that the three seventy-six offers a vastly improved access for tractor-trailer for fuel deliveries and any other delivery or service vehicle for that matter. If, if that, you can get a tractor-trailer in on that, in that entrance onto, off of eighty-two, but it's difficult, and, you know, it definitely can be to compounding operational and then subsequent safety problems. So if this option does go forward through the D O T and it turns out to be the preferred alternative, it would also enable, enable them to put more positive control on the access point closest to three seventy-six. Right now, right now, the site has two full-access driveways, no restrictions in movements, although, you know, taking a left-turn lane out of the one close to three seventy-six probably isn't very practical, it's not a prohibited movement at this point. But if the access is allowed on three seventy-six, that driveway could be reduced to a right turn in and a right turn out. And then the one further to the east would just remain a full-access entrance.
Okay.
So it offers some pretty, some pretty good improvements that way. Certainly, a tractor-trailer coming off of three seventy-six will be able to make it through and out of the site. The only way to get in and out is to come in off of three seventy-six and then head eastbound on eighty-two. That's really the only way to access the site. If it does have to come in off of eighty-two, it can really only come in on the, on the west entrance and then maneuver itself on the site and exit out, exit out the eastern, eastern entrance.
Okay.
As Mike indicated, it's in the same place at the D O T as John Jay. Everything that the D O T has requested has been submitted to them, and we're just waiting for their review and comment.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against the Hopewell gas station on Route eighty-two? I'll have you come on up, just like we did with the last one, and if you don't mind signing in at our clipboard, and then we'll call you up to the podium in, in order. You can just put plus next slide. Absolutely, thank you.
I, I wasn't planning on speaking here, but I just want to say, listening to this, again, this is a very nice building, and as someone who uses this intersection a lot, I think having an entrance on Route eighty-two alleviates what you said, if, because if you're coming on, on, not on eighty-two, on three seventy-six, I'm sorry. If you're coming on eighty-two and you decide to pull into the gas station, the guy behind you might not know. So that's a very valid point, so I think that's a good improvement. I think it should only be right turn in and right turn out. I don't think you should be allowed to make a left-hand turn onto three seventy-six, that would be a disaster.
Actually, just as a clarification, it only is an entrance, it's a one-way in only.
Oh, I thought you said.
No, there's.
You meant the other way.
The other access.
Okay, well, I think adding that as an access is a great idea. And I just wanted to thank you all again. This is the first public hearing I've been to where I felt people actually listened, so I appreciate it. I think the meeting was run professionally and with good decorum, and I appreciate everybody listening. I don't know your name and who you are, though.
I'm Brendan Fitzgerald, I'm a traffic consultant for the town.
Okay, I think, I thank you, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to offer comments on the Hopewell gas, gas station application? Okay, all right. Brendan, I think for this one, we really just, we're waiting on D O T comments, so as far as next steps with this one, I think until we have those comments, we, we're not sure which plan exactly we're moving forward with.
Exactly. I mean, I would think maybe just keeping the same schedule then.
Is that acceptable, Mike, or is that?
It really becomes an issue, too. It doesn't, I don't think there's as many issues swirling around on this one as the previous one.
It's less impactful.
Hopefully, A R B were taking care of Z B A, hopefully, we should be okay with D O T, you know. It, it's up to the board as to whether you'd like to continue to run these, you know, parallel, or could we jump up a little bit and maybe, you know, perhaps something in March.
I think this is, this is an improvement to the site in a lot of ways, and there's no reason why they have to move lockstep. This one doesn't have half the issues surrounding it, right? So.
I think.
When's the next zoning meeting, Bill?
We're just waiting on the D O T comments, too, that we have to finish the others back.
Yes.
The last week in March, or the last meeting in March?
I, I think about worst case. So we go in next week, which is February, and let's just say, for the sake of keeping it nice and tidy and so forth, they say, we'll defer our decision to next month, which is.
It's May or.
The second meeting in March.
March twelfth.
March twelfth. So I would think safely, if we make it the third meeting in March for this, which saves us a few weeks shaved off the previous one, I think that's, that's.
The second planning board meeting would be March nineteenth.
That's the point. All right, that way we would have absolute, hopefully, our variances in hand and all that good stuff.
They, they don't have to, these don't have to stay together, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think we initially discussed them together just because the applications came in at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay.
So wait a minute, are you saying March nineteenth or the second?
March nineteenth.
Was that what we did the last one?
The other one.
All right, the other one's April, all right, we're in April.
Right, so this one would shave a few weeks if we could get to the second.
Yeah, no, I don't.
And any, any last comments, Michelle or Joe, before we adjourn?
I'm just trying to understand, we're adjourning it to March nineteenth?
Yes.
And why are we adjourning it?
Because we don't have the D O T comments, we don't know which plan we're moving forward with.
Okay, but we're not, we have to, because you have to, you need your neck deck before the Z B A and the A R B can sign off on their final.
Oh, we don't know what plan we're moving forward with.
No, I know, I know, I'm just trying to say, as far as timing.
Oh, that's right, the Z B A can't.
Right, so I'm just saying.
They can't give you a variance until there's a neck deck and.
Right.
Planning board's the lead agency.
Yeah, but they can close their public hearing.
They can, but I just, I just wanted to make sure that, that was factored into the timing.
Okay.
Well, let's see.
But I, we still can't close a public hearing until we know which plan.
Right, no, no, you can't.
I just want to be clear.
I just couldn't, I just didn't, I wasn't sure why we're, I just wasn't remembering that piece of it, but.
Okay.
But as far as the Z B A is concerned, I have to make sure.
Well, we could take a chance and move it up to the first meeting in March and see if we get D O T to respond. If they don't.
That might be better because.
But if you don't close out with the Z B A and you're.
But by then, if you get some comments from the, the D O T, you might be willing to consider closing the public hearing, neck decking it.
Okay.
Then it goes to the Z B A, they give you a variance, and then it comes back on.
How is there?
And your only risk you run is if D O T doesn't grant it.
I, I, I think it should be okay.
They kind of onboard with it, or?
Yeah, and, and what happens is, is it just becomes an issue of that, and I, I'm going by the gauge of this public hearing. I guess we'll have the same.
Oh, the Z B A was, I, I was at that meeting, and the Z B A was, thought it was the best thing.
Yeah, they were okay with it.
To clean up the site, they were very supportive.
Sometimes public hearings extend things out, but if I can go by the gauge of what here happened tonight, then I think we're going to be okay. It's just making sure that if we can, if I can urge them to be able to make that decision, and these are area variances, it's nothing, focus, focus about it, I just.
If we make it March fifth, though, your submission deadline is pretty tight after that meeting.
I think we want to concentrate at this point, just getting lighting details down and things such as that. The refuse enclosure, we want to talk about that a little bit, because I want to report back to the A R B on Thursday.
I'd like the color of the fencing to match the building if possible.
We okay with the location here?
From a, from a circulation traffic perspective, I would actually think that it might, it might make more sense on the far side, only because depending on.
Well, I think definitely, if you have the access from three seventy-six, I think you need to move it over just so that you're not.
I agree, I think you're going to get less traffic around it over there.
That's, that's what they prefer, so that would be great to make, everybody happy, you know?
Sure.
Yeah, Laurie, we had some question as far as how much the site's going to possibly be open during building demolition and other site work? Are they going to continue selling gas and have the existing building operate while, while they do some building?
I, I think, I think that the intent is to do that, I think what we'll have to do is we'll, is prepare a comprehensive plan that shows what, how this is going to be phased and how the work's going to be done in order to maintain traffic while it's open.
But it'd be open for gas, it wouldn't be the dry goods.
Unless you bring a trailer in or something.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta have, what happens is, is this, this becomes a very tight situation.
Right.
From here.
No, but I mean, you would probably put a trailer for pumping the gas to continue that, but would you sell products still?
The intent.
Can you come back at the next meeting and clarify?
All right, the intent is yes, but I think we need to show you how we're going to do that. Because there's a little bump out there. It actually shows on here encroaching.
Oh, I see. You'd leave the old building and then build a ramp.
Right, but the thought is, is not to build that front bump out first, build up against the other building and do that. But let's, I think that's kind of the question you're asking.
Yeah, just clarify, like, give us your construction plan and hours of operation during construction and that.
Yep.
Is this twenty-four hours as well, Mike, or is this intended to?
Yeah, I believe it's twenty-four hours.
I'm just asking. Okay. And any other questions or comments from board members? Anything else we should talk about before we, Joe, Brendan, Michelle? Okay, so Mike, what's your preference, the fifth or the nineteenth?
Well, let's go through those timeframes.
Well, I, the thought just occurred to me, if you put the public hearing over to the nineteenth, you could put it on for March fifth to consider adoption of a neck deck. Because you, you don't have to close the public hearing to adopt a neck deck. So by March fifth, theoretically, you could have sufficient information to make you comfortable to do a neck deck. That then would clear the way for the ZBA on the twelfth to render their decision in order. And then you would still have the public hearing and that way there would be any delay with the.
So do we, do we do the neck deck during the public hearing or do we adjourn the public hearing to the nineteenth but put the neck deck on for the fif-? I'm not following.
Well, I'm saying you could put the neck deck on the meeting at the fifth and continue the public hearing to the nineteenth. If that makes it easier. I mean, because then on the twelfth, if you do a neck deck on the fifth, on the twelfth, the ZBA can give the variance. Then the public hearing, you close it and you're finished.
Right. Logistically, we can do that. I don't think, I don't think this town has typically goes through and does a neck deck prior to the closing of a public hearing. And maybe that's the question. That's the, apparently that's the way it's supposed to be done. There's a, there's a lot of modification, modifications in terms of clarifications and procedurally how.
My only concern with doing a neck deck on the fifth is if we don't have DOT comment and we don't know which plan we're moving forward with, how are we writing a, a neck deck based on?
You would still need something from DOT.
Yeah, we, I don't, we'd have to, you gotta have something from DOT.
Right.
Because we're still hanging in the wind here.
DOT, the only impact they have is the, is the cut three seventy-six input, right? That's the only.
Which is a significant factor.
But, but, but I don't think for the negative declaration, we care if it's there or not. Or am I totally screwed up?
But site circulate, I mean, our mitigations and everything would be based on whether or not there's going to be traffic coming in diverted from three seventy-six and.
Okay, but I, I thought if the traffic is diverted in from three seventy-six, things get better. If not, they're the same as they are now.
Right, which is why our neck deck would be different depending on how we need to mitigate traffic.
I don't know how you, how could we mitigate traffic there if you don't put the.
You might change or reconfigure the two remaining entrances. There's all kinds of things you might consider.
Okay, I hadn't seen any, I hadn't heard anyone propose that until now.
Well, because we're all optimistic that this is the plan.
But even if we didn't put, even when we discussed not putting the entrance in for three seventy-six, I don't remember anyone saying to reconfigure the two entrances.
Yeah, there was discussion about putting, that the first one would only be right turn in only. That there would be a painted island or a raised island, things like that.
Yes, okay. So I, I was thinking you, you could declare a neck deck now, couldn't you? Issue it and just continue the public hearing. This way it'll be in, in place for the zoning board next week?
I would not be comfortable doing a neck deck without knowing what plan we're moving forward with. And if the majority of the board is comfortable doing that, that, I, but I, for me personally, I, I don't.
I just think that's a good idea in the past.
Well, if, if we can adjourn, adjourn the hearing to the second meeting in March, that's kind of an automatic. Right? And then, I, that gives a whole additional, I think the answer from DOT is going to be thumbs up or thumbs down. I know, I, I think that's probably what we're going to get. And that gives a whole month before the first meeting in March to get that answer. So we could be officially adjourned to the second meeting in March and then we can keep the board apprised. And if we'd like to be back before you for, for the, for purpose of a discussion to discuss that one particular item, I guess we can do that.
And you could also make the variance a condition of your approval if you did it on the nineteenth and then he goes in April and gets it done.
I mean, is, is there a time consideration where you need to rush this through? I, I just explained that because I, but I want to make sure we have that DOT comment.
Yeah, we'd like to get it done because it's.
He's right.
But my point is, we're, we're trying to finagle dates right now, just in case, but if we don't need to.
Because if you're going to do it, I'm going to have to double the bond.
Yeah, what do you see a bond on this one?
All right, Mike, we'll, we'll pencil you in for a discussion, for a discussion on March fifth. And if we're able to move forward with the neck deck because we have the DOT comments, great. If we're not, um, we'll adjourn, up, entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the nineteenth. Fair enough?
Good.
Doesn't mean you have to go back to the zoning board, though, again, in March.
On the twelfth of March or the second meeting in April, if someone we get DOT comments, it shouldn't be issued.
The position of the building is independently accessed. It can act independently.
Well, actually, I would argue that, that you're getting granted an area variance because you're improving the public safety of the site.
Right.
So that the circulation and access does heavily weigh into whether or not the, the ZBA's decision on whether or not to grant the variance. They would like to see a public safety improvement to grant that variance.
So discussion on March fifth to, if possible, contemplate the neck deck. Otherwise, we'll just get an update on where you stand with it. And do I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing to March nineteenth?
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. So, um, if something changes in the meantime, certainly let us know.
Yeah, we'll keep you apprised. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the discussion for the Taconic Innovations amended site plan on Route three seventy-six. Now that we're in discussions, yeah, you can turn it back and work on it.
Do it.
Your foundation does?
Yes, it does. A lot of work involved now. In fact, didn't very notice it from the road.
Um, we met with, uh, Mr. Cesar's office. We worked out a lot of DOT issues. We are proposing to redo the entrance. We did submit for amended.
That's different, right?
I'm sorry.
You weren't originally doing that?
No, actually what happened was the, um, the radii were substandard, so. And also they, they had an issue, which actually Brendan pointed out, was that one of the ribs was too low on the basins and the entry. So we're going to raise those. We're going to replace one. Other than that, the plan's not changed. We've progressed. We went to the Board of Health. We've met with them about the, the proposed septic system.
Changed the parking lot a bit, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, we did. We did re, rearrange the parking to allow flow through traffic behind the parking, or behind, on the other side of the, the aisle.
Did it significantly change the number of spaces or anything?
I think we lost four. But we actually, we re-upped the parking count. We think we're, uh, we're trying to reference what we were using here. I think we're down two.
Okay.
I think that's what we're, that's inclusive of the land banking.
Okay.
As you know, we're leaving this large area here. I have a landscaping plan, which we did submit. Unfortunately, I didn't bring it with me. That's not working, so.
Okay.
I was going to, but you can see we've, we've done quite a bit of landscaping in here. We're using Jit, the Sonic route, and Sonic's doing it. The building hasn't changed too much. We've actually progressed. One of the things that's not on this plan, which will be on the plan, that's, uh, for the public hearing, we're proposing to use a chiller on this building in lieu of rooftop units. The chiller's going to be.
So it'll be on a pad?
Yeah, it'll be on a pad next to that last site. It's about fifteen feet long by about eight and a half feet wide. It will fit inside the setback. We just think it's going to be a better option for this building because of the way it's configured. We don't want to go with rooftop units because it's very shallow roof and metal, so.
Is there like a fence or is it decorative or is there something?
It's actually, it's, it's not the prettiest thing you want to look at, but.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I picture a chiller.
But it's, if you've ever been back here, this is the back of Mr. Kelleher's property. There, this is all wooded back in here. I can't really put a fence around it because it obstructs, this thing needs to breathe.
No, yeah.
So if I did do a fence, it'd have to be very wide, you know, let's say. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't really be a fence anymore.
But you'll, you'll, you'll put the location of the pad and everything.
Yeah, I'll show it on here.
Get a feel for whether there should be even just maybe a land, you said there's trees there, but maybe a couple shrubs or something.
Yeah, you got to be careful of this thing because it's a big fan. So we gotta, you know, I have to give it some room. But we thought this was the best spot, one for, it's, it's close to the building. It's not out front. It's behind, um, this is Schwartz's property that comes around here, which they don't really use. And this is the back of, the building sits over here, so I don't think it'll bother anybody. It's not very noisy. It's just that it's, um, you know, we just think it's a better option than a whole slew of condensers.
Okay.
We worked out a lighting plan. We're going to go with, uh, um, obviously a little bit more of a decorative light than I think we originally proposed. We got, the ARB is on. We're going to be in a meeting with them Thursday evening, so.
With the, the rink ending, so you don't have the landscaping plant, because we don't have the AV tonight, but is that going to be, um, bless you. Is that going to be mostly planting? Are there going to be picnic tables there?
Here.
What, what's the?
Right now, it's just, it's green space. There are sun shrubs. I, I do remember us putting something in here, but right now it's just primary lawn.
I'm just trying to figure out whether, would this be an area where employees might go to have lunch or something like that?
You might, you might, yeah. Yeah, I would assume so.
Okay.
I mean, it's away from the buildings. It's, you know, it's kind of your own little park back there.
I want to call it the rink because it determines.
One thing I want to talk about, first of all, thank you guys for the last meeting. You really helped me get the, we're moving. We got the, the final permit for this building. Um, one thing I pointed out in my response letter to, to the consultants was, I think Joe would ask for a phasing plan. One thing I'm, I'm going to ask the board if you would consider is, um, we've got to actually, in order to get a CO for this building, for phase one, let's call it, eight seventy-seven, eight seventy-nine. To get a CO for eight seventy-seven, I always, I've obviously got to have this in. What we'd like to do, if the board would wish it or could get it, we'd like to put binder in here only. That way, while we're constructing this building, construction vehicles can get on it and then we can pave final course. Once it's done, it's nice, it's neat, it's clean. It gives it time for this to settle, you know, over the, the time that it takes us to construct this. Because you're going to have dump trucks, concrete trucks, you name it, on this. And we just think that if we were able to leave this binder for the time being, until this is complete and then when we pave, we do final coat for the whole thing. That way, it's, it's just a, a much cleaner job than trying to patch the whole thing together in the end. Oh, it'd be for CO of this.
Well, yeah.
But, and Mark, it's still two separate parcels, right?
No, they will be one. They're going to be combined.
But you want to put the binder down now, is what I'm saying.
No, no, no.
No, no, he's saying, can he just do the binder and get a CO on that building?
To get a CO for phase one, eight seventy-seven, I have to construct this road, which is partially on eight, on eight seventy-nine.
So you don't want to finish it until you're actually done with.
With everything.
Right.
Um, Scott, is there?
Yeah, that's not unusual to make that request. The only thing that I would add, you'd have to do temporary striping.
Sure, sure.
And you'd have to set your castings flush with your binder course and then adjust them when you top it.
We only have, we only have these, there's three that are going to be affected, so the other ones are in the other part. So there's only really three we got to worry about. But we just think it makes a neater job in the end.
The only thing like typically.
And you are building that second building.
Typically, we, we would have.
Oh, they're going to do it.
All right, like maybe hold a bond for that, but we'll have to see how, because of the nature of this.
I think we definitely would want that.
But we'll have to see how we.
At least the final course.
Yeah, so we'll work that out. We can work that out.
Well, I suppose your worst-case scenario is they go back to the plan that's currently approved, which would be a totally different configuration.
Well, by the time he gets the binder, I'm sure this will be well along, well along with.
Mark, the only comment I have about that is, you remember what the, the whole swift and, and the amount of disturbance? And if that, where that phasing line is drawn, if you're then over your acre, uh, I guess the timing for when you file your NOI would have to happen before you actually move and do that other work.
I think.
Getting that.
I think before we get to that, we're going to file the NOI.
Okay.
There is some other work that we have to do on this parcel. I did speak to the Board of Health. There, we're right now proposing two wells. The Board of Health is saying, just connect this building, eight seventy-seven, to the existing well. And then when the time comes, we're going to put a treatment system for both buildings in the eight seventy-nine plant and then backfeed this plant. That way, we don't have to drill this, this well.
Okay, on that note, the town just recently is looking at making a, a major upgrade to the, to the water system.
You're going to connect it now?
Potentially.
Oh, my God, you could have told me two weeks ago.
Oh, two weeks ago, we didn't know. All right, this is as of about last week, so I'm, I'm going to say within the next two months, we'll have a much better handle on the direction we're going, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, but that doesn't do me any good.
Well, you got to try to factor it in. And I'll, and I'll talk with Tony, whoever your contact is at Board of Health, I'll talk to them.
I'll seek Board of Health approval. That way I'm staying on the path I'm on.
Okay.
If you guys choose to give me water, we don't.
Prior to you putting the filters in, right?
Yeah, then I don't put any of that in.
Right, you can put, we can put a note into that effect, yeah.
Yeah, it won't go in, you know, like Board of Health approval.
Too much, you're not going to have a filter.
Right, right, right. So we put some language in there to that effect.
In, in what? In what language would you order?
That if, prior to you getting to the point of installing your filters, and I hate to see you spend fifty grand on filters until you hook up to the municipal system, so.
Yeah, no.
Prior, prior to whatever, yeah, prior to that point, if water becomes available, we want you to hook up.
I don't think.
Like more or less mandatory.
If you're telling me in two months you'll know, you'll be way ahead of us.
Yeah, so that's our time.
Okay. What's the probability?
Probability? Pretty good.
Because would that allow me to sprinkler this?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. That's huge. Okay. Owen, Joe, I did speak to the Board of Health. These two dry wells, they do not serve, they're not in a parking lot. They only drain the courtyard. The roof actually pitches away from them.
Yeah, right.
So it's just whatever water hits it. She said that's fine.
Right.
So that's it.
Did, we have this already circulating for lead agency or did we need to research?
I think you did. I think you circulated.
You just reaffirmed that you were, um. I thought we asked for these new plants to be circulated.
They, they have to be circulated by the agency that might have approval like DOT and yes, we did ask that.
We did. We did circulate.
Has it been announced for the thirty days or?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mark, just bear with me. I was looking at my notes from the last. The last time you were here, we talked about the ARB. You were in front of them once. They wanted to try to make the two buildings look.
No, actually, we met informally with the chairman when we were doing the deep test pits. We met out there. Our actual formal meeting is Thursday.
Okay.
He did ask me at the meeting to make this building look like that building, but I tried to tell him that this building's bought. It's inside the existing building. It's soon to be, some assembly required, but it soon will be put on the foundation. And everything's purchased in order to make last year's deadline. I mean siding, everything's there.
Okay, so is there a way then to make the new building, the second building, look like the first building or have some sort of color scheme that's similar or something to that?
I could put a hardy plank on it. I'm kidding. The orange really.
Whether it's the same trim color or is it?
Well, we are, we're, we're going with a, we're going with a white pipe on. How's that? Around the top. It's hard. It's hard because it's, they're two different buildings. They're two different structures.
Sharing an entrance, sharing signage?
Most colors is though, like.
Different buildings.
They don't match. I mean, it's fine, yeah. The one thing though, that, that from the last time we were here, that's what we were about, is the lighting plan.
Yes, I think it's, we have, we submitted it. I think it's on, it's in the, uh, it's the landscape Sonic group prepared it. Should have been on the set we submitted.
Okay.
Were, I want to say they were twelve foot high. They're, um, they're pine cone, I think, is that the name? I don't know.
They had like some federal, I forget the name of the, the federal style.
Yeah, it's nice, blends, you know, we're not trying to overwhelm it.
Sorry.
Uh, there's, uh, it's in the landscaping. I mean, they did lighting in landscaping.
And Joe, I have a note that there, there was possibly a water culvert in the back of the property. Have we looked at the stormwater? Where, where are we with the stormwater? Is it, have we taken that into account yet or?
Yeah, we, we actually met with, um, someone in Mark's office earlier today and went over some, some of our preliminary comments about the stormwater and the drainage. And we think they're on a, you know, viable path to get the, the, the same system, just a little bit larger than what they had shown originally.
Is there a culvert outlet in the back here that?
No, it's just an existing low lying area that has no real defined outlet.
Okay.
But the soils allow the water to, to go into the ground and just certain times of year it can, can build up. And they, they did account for that in the original drainage analysis.
Our thirty days is up, as you said, January twenty fifth, so our thirty days is up for comment from interested agency, uh, sorry, involved agencies sometime towards the end of February, so Michelle, I'm thinking, March for public hearing, any concern with that, anything?
Is that work for you, Mark? I think you told me last time, Mark, fifth, we said that, we're pretty.
Did we set it?
Yes, it was set, that's why.
I don't know why, okay, it's not.
You just want them back for one more discussion.
Okay, it's not on my list, I thought we had done that, but it's not, it wasn't on my.
Man, I got a bowl of paper filled out for it.
Okay. I'm sorry. The only other, the only other thing we need to do is just make sure you bring with you for the public, the, the elevations, lots of, and all that.
Oh, no, we'll bring it, yeah, we'll bring it ours.
Hopefully have our AV step up and running, but if we don't, can you just make sure you have a large plan?
Yeah, I will, do you prefer the, the elevations on, because they will, I don't know if they'll come out that well on the.
It's, it's fine to have.
On next, okay.
But just if you don't mind bringing a larger copy of your plan, just in case, I'm not sure what works.
Yeah, I will. Okay.
Your basic, your connections.
I think it's a great proposal.
Thank you very much. We're hoping, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Hilltop Manor DEIS, I mentioned at the top of the meeting, the applicant asked to withdraw that from discussion tonight. Um, they intend to be submitting some additional information to, um, address some of the initial feedback from our professionals. So the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Saint Aloysius Beekman Road.
Sorry, I don't have any, uh, graphics other than a nineteen eighty-two survey. I, uh, my name is Alfred Capelli, I'm the project architect. I had requested a meeting with Scott and the Building Department, uh, yesterday, to discuss some improvements that uh, the sisters over at Saint Aloysius are looking to make to their two retreat buildings over at Saint Aloysius. Just to give you a little background, uh, on the property site, the top of this map here is Beekman Road, and if you are all familiar with the long driveway to the, uh, to the main facility there of, of Saint Aloysius, the main house at the end of the cul-de-sac, and it's flanked, uh, immediately to the left and the right, with two long buildings that are basically retreat, uh, centers, they're, they're vacant, uh, forty-five weeks out of the year, but on occasion, they, they, they have retreats there. And the setup is currently almost like a motel type of setup. The, uh, the sisters there, uh, are looking to update and upgrade the existing buildings. Buildings maybe last updated in the nineteen seventies, I don't know if anybody's been there, old wood paneling, nineteen seventies bathroom, the bedrooms off of the hallways, and there are gang bathrooms, uh, at the end of the corridors. I have actually floor plans reflecting, which again, you're probably not gonna be able to see. And basically, the task at hand was, uh, bringing the buildings up to code, updating them from an aesthetic point of view, and instead of having those gang, uh, bathrooms, if you will, at the end of the corridors, see if we could get at least shared bathrooms, if not private bathrooms, within the confines of the existing footprint. So, uh, what we attempted to do was, was just that, and surprisingly, within the same footprint of the building, we, um, we got the same number of bedrooms with, uh, more bathrooms. Uh, but part of, of, uh, once we did that, and we accomplished that, uh, uh, Mother Gloria, uh, who was the head of Saint Aloysius, said, Mr. Capelli, maybe we wanna get a couple of more bedrooms out of it than just maintaining the same number of bedrooms. And right now, there is fifty-two bedroom, uh, fifty-two beds, they're all shared, uh, so just for point of reference, there are fifty-two beds in these two, uh, in these two buildings. So, that being said, um, maybe they wanna put a little wing on. So, which we know is gonna necessitate coming, uh, to, to this planning board for full site plan review, et cetera, et cetera. That's probably a, a little ways off, you know, we're looking to perhaps phase this project and do one of the buildings renovations, maybe this year, the other building's renovation, maybe over the winter, and then maybe sometime in two thousand and fourteen, um, put an addition on for several, uh, uh, more beds, if you will. So I thought it would be incumbent upon me to speak to, uh, Mr. Byer, the building inspector, and Scott, to just explain to him what we're doing here in this phased approach. I didn't wanna submit demo plans or plans on renovating buildings without everybody getting the overall picture of what we're looking to do here. That being said, um, uh, again, there's no discussion about any addition that's, that would, that where we're adding, uh, uh, bedrooms, um, having to come before the planning board, and whatever requirements are necessary, health department wise, et cetera, et cetera, everything else is pretty much a, uh, you know, we think a, a, a building department issue. Although there are, you know, and, 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 uh, you know, I'm gonna mention it, you know, I don't think there's, there's any, uh, big deal with it, but one of the things that we need to do in order to make this thing code compliant is to have, um, a couple of stairwells that meet today's code. And those stairwells were not being placed inside the existing building, so there are gonna be small appendages on the outside of these two buildings for stairwells. Okay, whether that necessitates site plan review for those, that's part of what we're discussing here, in terms of going outside the bounds of, uh, of the footprint. We discussed, thinking, it's not a big deal, but.
Are they gonna be open stairwells?
No, no, they're gonna be closed stairwells. Actually, one of them is gonna, you know, uh, at least one of them is gonna have an elevator, so it's gonna be a stairwell and an elevator to get to the second floor. So these are going to be, I'm gonna say, in the neighborhood of maybe eight by twenty, eight by eighteen, uh, appendages on, on either side of the building, okay? And, um.
You're also looking to add cantilever to the second floor?
We're also looking, yes, uh, uh, thanks for reminding me, the footprint of the building, these are two-story buildings. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have any photographs, uh, of them with me this evening, half the building is, is, is vintage brick, the other half is vintage wood frame, in both cases. In order to get a little bit more space on the second floor, I'm cantilevering the second floor. So, footprint twenty-four foot wide, you can imagine how difficult it is to get a center hall to meet code today, and having the remnants of bedrooms, if you will, on either side. So in order to gain a little bit more elbow room, uh, yes, in my infinite wisdom, we're cantilevering the second floor on half of this building and half of that building, because I don't wanna touch the brick portion of the building and, and think about cantilevering that. So half of each building, I'm cantilevering two foot front and back, uh, if you will, uh, to gain a little bit more space. And these are just simple, two-story, uh, now, uh, horizontal aluminum sided, simple gable roofed buildings. Architecturally, I don't know what we're gonna do yet, we're, you know, we're very, very early into the, into the, uh, into the scheme of things, but again, in part of my presentation to, uh, to Ken and Scott was just to explain what we're looking to do, and, and again, he thought maybe it'd be a good idea to discuss this with you guys.
So I'm just trying to understand, you're not gonna raise these buildings, you're going to renovate the buildings, but the second floor, you're going to expand by two feet?
That's correct, that's correct.
Is it front and back, or side to side?
Front and back, front and back. There was discussion about raising the buildings at one time, there was another contractor who came in, spoke to them before I was involved, we wanna cut the whole buildings, we wanna, you know, start from scratch, we wanna maybe make the buildings a little bit bigger to accommodate us, and when she brought me in, I said, if you wanna do that, you're not starting this year, right, you know, I'm gonna guess that we're gonna have to start the whole site plan process all over, once I start expanding it to that degree. So I said, uh, if you can live with some of the rooms on the first floor, being smaller, and only one of the buildings on the first floor has bedrooms, the other, uh, 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 building has a large, uh, community type of room, and the other half has a little living area, dining area type of, uh, and a little, a little kitchen to facilitate when people do stay there on weekends, uh, a little, you know, so they're not stuck in their rooms. So really, I'm, I'm talking about tiny cubicles, uh, you know, on the first floor in building B, and then again, my thought was to expand slightly, two foot, two foot cantilever. Yes.
So let me just, one thing we discussed about yesterday, which is why I wanted Al to come, if they took the approach of raising the building and replaced it with a modern building with the same bedroom count, albeit maybe a little bit bigger.
Same footprint.
I mean, same bedroom count, bed count wouldn't affect the parking.
Right.
And forget the addition for the time being, because that might be a phase three later, but, but, I mean, I feel, given the scope of the renovation they're looking at, it might make more sense just to raise the building and replace it. The concern is, is it gonna take them six months or a year to get through the planning board, and, you know, the question is, if they're not increasing the number of bedrooms, do they even need to come before the planning board for that, can they just get a building permit?
Well, I would, I have a couple of comments, I think first, you, you have to look at whether, um, and Tom, you can probably answer this, whether this site would need to be subject to an ARB review, because it sounds like we're changing.
Well, it'd be a building, whatever ARB at least. We can do that through the Building Department, yeah, right.
Absolutely, I would intend to do that anyway.
Right.
So then the only other thing that I think I heard now, that I would want to see in front of the planning board is a minor site plan, what, maybe a minor site plan modification to add the stairwell.
Which, which we could possibly have them do by the letter application approach.
Right.
Because it's, what, made by, so it's a hundred and sixty square foot footprint, right?
He'd still be adding those if he builds a whole new building.
Yes, but, but that would afford him the ability to locate it maybe centrally, the elevator, as opposed to all the way on one end of the building, and it gives him, if he decides to do that.
I prefer that.
And I thank Scott for, 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 you know, allowing us, suggesting that maybe we, you know, enlarge the building to that degree, I haven't even reviewed that yet with my clients, I mean, now we're talking about additional expenses, well, foundations, et cetera, et cetera, in order to do that, so I'd have to talk to them about that as well, it's not, wasn't in the original program, and so we may not, but, but the, but the intent here is to, I don't wanna say for building A, again, we're gonna be phasing this, building A, start gutting and demolishing the building, again, down to the foundation, um.
To can, let me just ask.
Within a couple of months, yeah.
The cantilever, the second floor?
Yes.
You'd out, basically have to tear the roof off, right?
Absolutely.
And you have to, uh, splice onto your floor joists, if not replacing the floor joist.
Replacing the floor joist.
Replacing the floor joist, and then coming up with new walls two foot out.
You're building a whole new second floor.
That's pretty significant.
Whole new second floor, right.
That's pretty significant.
Certainly is.
Scope of.
You might as well build a new building.
Could I ask a question? The, um, if the buildings were made bigger, what area would be impacted by the increase in size, just grass area or?
Yes, grass area, actually, this, it's, it's very diff- difficult for you to see, this little hatch dark area here actually would be the addition. The building exists from left to right there, and about fifteen years ago, we came before this board, some of yous may or may not have been here, we added onto building B, what I call building B, a, um, a community room and additional daycare facilities onto the end of this building. So there seems to be a little L shape here, and basically, we were mim- mimicking that, so that, uh, our little addition for some additional bedrooms would create the L. And this is all grass, this is all green here, we're not, you know, lumbering on, on anything else, I mean, there are many other issues there that we have to contend with, but, uh, you know, again, we have the time to do it, given the fact that we're gonna be taking our time and phasing this.
So, you're going to demolish the second floor and the roof to rebuild, but you don't wanna take the whole building down and just replace everything?
Well, we, the, the discussion with, um, with Scott and Ken, it, we make it to the point that we even take the first floor walls down, but I didn't wanna touch the foundation, because again, I thought that would be sacred in terms of not going beyond those boundaries, uh, necessitating a, a planning board review, and, and, and that's where, and that's where Scott said, let's have a discussion, maybe we'll let you go out another two foot here and there, not that I was asking for it, and maybe you don't have to go for, for a, for a full-blown review, because again, they wanna get things, they wanna get things, uh, moving here.
So just to confirm again, you're not talking, because right now, you're not talking about putting the actual addition on the second building, you're talking about the exact same.
Absolutely.
Just the stairs and the elevens.
Just the stair towers and the elevators.
Right, but, but just to clarify, you're talking about the exact same number of bedrooms, even though the buildings will be configured slightly differently.
Same number of bedrooms.
You're talking about a building up to code, you're talking about making sure that, um, you have the appropriate access to second floor through an elevator.
Absolutely.
And adding stairwells that.
Yeah, and, and, and.
The stairwells must exist now, it looks like they're in the middle.
Yes, there are internal stairwells.
So you're gonna add bedrooms in place of those stairwells?
Yeah, basically, in order to, I'm adding bedroom, I mean, I'm adding bathrooms, the bedroom count remains the same, and again, it's, it's, I have two bedroom, two bathrooms per floor, and everybody's gonna run down the end of the hallway to use the bathrooms, I mean, it's, that's maybe the nineteen seventies, or, or back in the day, today, people are a little different, so we're creating shared, uh, shared bathrooms, so that, um, let me see, in one particular configuration here, which is this building here, uh, same building, community room, dining room, kitchen, living room, the bedrooms upstairs, there are eighteen bedrooms, before there are eighteen bedrooms now, yes, I was forced to. To move things and spread them out, stairwell, elevator, down at the far end, uh, which is, uh, to make it a legal set of stairs, I don't wanna say the existing stairs are illegal, but, and the bedrooms become a little bit larger by virtue of the two-foot cantilever.
I mean, you have, where these buildings are situated, you have plenty of room, it's not like you're encroaching on a neighboring property, you're, you're talking about from, from a planning perspective, the footprint of the building would change at most by a couple of feet, and whatever you're doing with the stairwell. Change, the use isn't changing, I, I don't.
And the park is not changing until they get to the addition part, yeah.
Well, the addition would be different, that would have to come in and go through a regular process, but that's not what you're talking about, I guess I'm, if it makes sense to raise the building and change the footprint a little bit, I think if you bring it in and you show us what you're doing, personally and the rest of the board can weigh in, I'm seeing that as a minor site plan modification to bring it up to code and not change its use.
And the only comment I have is just, just that, whatever, I, I don't know what plans exist currently for the site, in other words, is there an accurate site plan currently for the site, or are we kinda working on?
No, basically, and the reason for, and I think we talked about it yesterday, I have nothing but a nineteen eighty-two survey here, so already, in order, you know, forgetting about getting on the planning board next month or the month after, for the addition, which I wanted to take our time and do what we had to do, to our due diligence, I don't have, I don't have a survey, I gotta go out, solicit a surveyor, get them to go out there in the field, and maybe two months before I even have something here, in order to prepare a site plan, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
But I think you could give us a feel for what you're proposing as far as what the new footprint will look like, what the existing footprint looks like, and it's, just in a letter, not changing the use, not changing the number of bedrooms. I understand the bathrooms are changing to modernize, but, um, to me, it's not a.
And if you do the one building on this side, that's only having the stair and elevator, additional square footage, you could probably get that to go ahead by a letter.
We have a minor, to me, that we have the ability to approve minor site plan modifications, this is the classic example of why we would wanna be able to.
Exactly, it's really just putting a new building into, uh, the slot with of extra feet.
And then I guess, but what I'm getting at is, I, I mean, you're, you're talking about cantilevering a second floor and doing things like that, if you decide it's easier to knock it down and just expand by the two feet, for me, that's still minor, because you're not really, you're not changing the use or the size of the capacity.
So I will speak to them, and that letter that we're gonna submit to you may have enlargement of the building, or the letter may only address the stairwell and the elevator shaft, depending upon which way they want it.
And then just explain, you're still doing the cantilever.
Yeah, we're still gonna do that.
Key is, you're keeping the same number of beds.
Absolutely, one hundred percent, you know, in this particular case, eighteen beds, eighteen beds.
And the same square footage of common area.
Same square footage on the footprints.
Right.
Minus the cantilever on half of the building, two foot, two foot.
But your extra square footage is for bathrooms, it's not for community rooms?
No, no, no.
No, they wanna make it a bedroom.
Yeah, the bedrooms, but it's not, yeah, it's not like.
I mean, we're talking about thirty, two foot by thirty foot, two foot by, a hundred and twenty square feet per building, that's all we're talking about, mine, plus the elevator and stairwell, but the square footage is insignificant.
I mean, I don't have.
But if it makes more sense to, to add the two feet to the foundation, do what makes more sense.
I'll ask, the, we, you know, there's a builder in place, he puts the numbers together.
I'd just see something that looks really nice out there, rather than something that, just to make it work.
Sure.
To bypass the planning board.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's still worthwhile to go to the ARB and just have them take a look at what the outset of the building will look like, but that's, like you said, part of the building process, I don't think we need the planning board.
But that's, like you said, part of the building process. I don't think we need the planning board.
Well, we're calling it a site plan modification with no site plan?
Well, that's, that's, that's what I just wanted to finish my, I just wanna finish my comment. Yeah, I, I, the only concern that I have is that if there is no existing site plan, we're making changes to the building and then in the future.
I think that's.
Yeah, well, no, that, and that may suffice.
That's the site plan right there.
Okay, well, that may suffice, but I just want to make sure that anything that we have on the record shows whatever's proposed so that you have, like, if, if they come in in another year for an addition, we have something to work off and, and something to enforce, more importantly, something to enforce.
And when you come back for the addition, we would probably do a little bit more formal site plan.
Absolutely.
But what you have now for me is, I mean, this.
They were here like a couple of years ago, weren't they?
Yeah, that's what you said.
For what?
Well, we, we came fifteen years ago and we got the take here, but recently, they came before you, Mike McCormick came before you for the, an extension to the chapel, I understand.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Okay? It's, it's only a few, not too many years ago.
Yeah, it was a couple, it was like two years ago, maybe three.
They went by, they went by, so they went to the office. And they got Mike McCormick and something happened. They couldn't get it approved or something. Or somebody.
No, they only came in for discussion and that was it.
Oh.
I mean, they had a public. So. What we're thinking is if you submit this as existing site plan, explain it's old, it is what it is, and then just tell us the change that you wanna make and we can formalize the documentation on the site itself.
And then, as one other question I asked was, if there was any historical significance to those structures, you didn't know quite how far back they go, but not, they didn't predate nineteen hundreds or?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's, I'm guessing, no, the additions certainly are circa nineteen sixties or so. The brick buildings, I don't think that they're pren- yeah, they're brick, small, but I don't think they predate nineteen, uh, nineteen hundred.
So there wouldn't be historical in terms of they did raise them?
I can certainly find out.
If, just add that to your letter then as, as well. Give us the approximate construction dates of the buildings and.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. That was great.
Um, anything else we need to go over tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
For the second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.